I'll call the, is this on? There we go. I'll call the February 26 study session of the City Council to order. A roll call, please.
The record will show that all council members are present except for Rozansky and Webb.
Okay. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilman Hen.
Yes, I actually have a few here. With regard to item eight on the water rate utility, the water rate study, I do have a concern, and it's possible that maybe we would pull this and discuss it a little further this evening, but I do have a concern that I would like to be able to get the results of the various phases of that study made available as and when each phase is completed. And if we need to have a fuller discussion of that, I'd be glad to defer and pull it this evening, but is that...
I really would like to see a fuller discussion of that because it may be that the different phases, you know, all need to come together at the end, and there may be some adjustment to, you know, different elements of that, so I don't know how to answer that, and this will give me an opportunity to have Steve Meier to address that.
And then on item seven on McFadden Square, the words at the very end to be added, I was confused about the words, the quote "timeline," unquote. And I am concerned that we've got Newport Coast annexation listed. What about Santa Ana Heights?
Yeah, I think we've, the city has had...
I'm not trying to make trouble here.
The city has had over eighty annexations since the city was incorporated in 1906, so that does pose some issues. We could have quite a timeline.
I'd just add one thing to that. I think Councilmember Webb brought up that Linda Isle is Isle and not Linda Island. They still have it listed as Linda Island, the way I read it.
It's Lido Isle.
Lido Isle.
I think it's Linda Island.
Is it Linda Island? I thought it was Linda Isle.
That's Linda Isle, yeah.
That's Lido Isle.
It's an Isle.
All right. We need to check on that.
No, somebody needs to double-check that.
And lastly, on items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one on the insurance rate renewals, I'm pleased to see that it looks like we're getting some premium reduction here. I would like to get a memorandum, and this can come after the fact. We don't need to hold things up. I know you've got a renewal date for March first. But I would like to get a memorandum that would, from Lauren Farley or whoever, that would summarize the carriers that were contacted for each of the marketing, each of the coverages that we went out for, and the quotes that we received. I'd also like to understand if there were any coverage or policy changes of significance associated with these renewals. And thirdly, in view of the fact that we are seeing some premium reduction here, did we consider raising our coverages or perhaps shortening our SIRs and deductibles? Generally, it's been my experience that in soft markets, it's a good idea to consider doing those kinds of things because in hard markets, it gives you some chips to bargain for that you might not otherwise have. And so you don't always want to raise your coverages. Sometimes you don't need to, but I'd just like to see a discussion of that, and I'd be happy to get this in a memorandum after the fact here.
Mayor and Councilman Burhen, that item, some of that clarification hopefully can be made today at five o'clock. It's part of the study session to go over those questions.
Okay.
So there's, Lauren Farley's here, and so is our insurance broker.
All right.
So to the extent they can answer those questions, that's a good heads-up for them.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Deagle?
None.
Councilmember Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Curry?
Just a clarification is the thinking on item eighteen, which is the budgeting for moving forward with new city hall studies. It's on the consent calendar. Is the thought being that we would discuss the policy direction when we get to the S-31 item? Because these are sort of in tandem.
Well, I think these are studies that the staff has already started implementation on, the traffic studies and soils engineering studies.
All right, so really, the sort of the policy discussion about moving forward will happen on S-31?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Webb?
On item twenty-two, I can either do it right now or pull the item, but I have two additions and one modification to the timeline. Councilmember Hen had mentioned the Newport Coast annexation as far as one of the words that was on the sphere, whatever you want to call it. On the timeline itself, we do have in 2002 Newport Coast and Santa Ana Heights annexed, so I think that it's, that's covered in the stones on the ground, and I don't think you need to worry that much about it on the globe. Those were just supposed to be words, as I understand it, which would just mention various different areas within the community. The additions that I would like to make to the timeline, I talked over with Nancy, and she suggested in 1913 that we mention the opening of the first Balboa Theater. And then in 2004, I'd like to add Groenelmar's hundredth anniversary. And in 2006, I'd like to make a change that says Newport Beach celebrates its centennial as opposed to its hundredth year. Now, do, is it, can we just make those changes, or should we bring that out and pull the item and do it at the meeting?
I would hope that you would pull it tonight, just because I think people will be interested.
All right, that's fine. I'll pull the item.
So you'll pull it and make those recommendations?
Yeah. That was all I had.
Okay, and I have nothing. So we'll go back to the agenda, and our first item is the Orange County Transportation Authority presentation regarding the State Route 55 access study.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have with us tonight members of OCTA and their consultant, LSA, Tony Petros and Glenn Campbell here to make a presentation. As you might be aware, councilmembers Rozansky and Webb have both served on this committee working with Costa Mesa to look at various ways that we might improve access through the Newport Boulevard corridor. And so they have a brief presentation for us this afternoon to let us know what's been going on.
I think that we need to introduce Mayor Protem Mansour from Costa Mesa, who has been the one that has really been pushing and spearheading this effort, and let him, would you like to make some opening comments on that before you, sorry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. My name is Alan Mansour. I'm Mayor Protem of Costa Mesa. I just want to thank all of you for this opportunity to come here today. I want to also thank OCTA staff for the work they've done. I also want to thank Steve Rozansky and Don Webb for their time on the initial meetings with elected officials to get this moving. And this has just been part of initial discussions with elected officials, and we've come up with a purpose and need study and some public outreach, and that's, again, what this, part of this is for today, and we've had an opportunity to do a couple of public outreach sessions in Costa Mesa as well. I just wanted to also say I'm looking forward to not only working with you on the 55, but on future issues like banning ranch and airport as well. I think those are issues that are very important to both of our cities. As I've mentioned, I've had an opportunity also to meet with Mayor Ed Selig and Don Webb and Steve Rozansky, and I've asked our city staff to set up meetings with the rest of the remaining council members so that I can personally have an opportunity to meet with you and open up dialogue and continue to having that open dialogue on this issue and other issues as well. I'm always open to meet on any issue, so once again, I want to thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to OCTA at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Glenn Campbell with the Orange County Transportation Authority, and we'll walk you first through what the process is we're going through here, and then we have a list of the initial alternatives that we've been looking at. As I think everyone here is aware, when the freeway part of the SR-55 was continued on south to its present ending at 19th Street in sixteen years ago, it was not really completed all the way. Presently, of course, is every one of where it ends right here at Nineteenth, but the plans that were completed at that time included the continuation of it south of that point, just east of Newport, down to just north of the Newport City line right here. That was approved back in 1985, but the funding did not exist, and the impacts, especially from a right-of-way point of view, in this area were extremely high, and there simply was no funding on the horizon at that time, and there isn't at present. Because of the impacts, however, we had been approached about seeking alternatives to the freeway. And so that's the effort that we've been underway since August, is to see if there are ways of addressing the traffic issues and the extreme congestion that occurs, especially between Nineteenth and Seventeenth in this area, something other than a six-lane freeway which would run through here. This is the first half of an effort that, what this will do is to explore as broad a range of conceptual options and alternatives as we're able to, and screen those down to three or four really feasible alternatives. That set of three or four would be the end of the effort that we're in at present. We would then go into a second phase in the future, either next year or the year after, where we would do a very refined assessment of those three or four, and hopefully be able to arrive at a single locally preferred alternative. As was mentioned before I got up here, we've been working with a broad range of people, and we, in March of this year, will be beginning open houses to seek the public's input as well, before we go into the final evaluation of the twelve, or the eight alternatives, I'm sorry, that we'll be showing you here. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Tony Petros from our consultant team, who will run you through the alternatives and the issues that we have found as we work with the people in this area.
Thank you, Glenn. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Tony Petros, principal with LSA Associates and the project manager for OCTA on the 55 access study. We were selected to conduct this first phase of a study, and it is intended to be a very iterative process, one that incorporates a lot of input from the public, from your staffs, from your elected representatives, and it basically follows a federal major investment study process where, at the outset, defined purposes and needs are established, and everything then reverts back to, did we in fact achieve those needs and address those purposes? We had initial meetings with the staffs of the two cities, with elected officials. We, as has been mentioned, held our first stakeholder sessions with the two communities, and came out with some very, very clear messages that were being delivered about the conditions along the Newport Boulevard corridor regarding congestion, business access, parking, ease of transition through the communities in the Newport Heights area on the east side of Costa Mesa. And this was all culled into the purpose and need process that is outlined, like I was suggesting, in the state and federal guidelines. Copies of that document are available for you here, and generally, it covers issues like the volumes along the freeway, their impact in the corridor, community concerns related to that, as you can see from the need here, and the purposes in reducing traffic congestion, managing regional impacts on local streets, and not impinging on opportunities for bus rapid transit and other transit alternatives through that corridor. This is very important because as we start to talk about concepts and alternatives, everything that you will see ultimately has to be evaluated against the statements of the purpose and the need in the corridor, and these should be a reflection of the desires of the community, as expressed by your professional staff, you, the elected officials, and most importantly, the constituents who are affected by traffic in this area. As we start to develop concepts then for this, there are some fundamental concepts that must be applied and put on the table, and these we're going to start to talk about today. The initial concepts include a no-build, a baseline condition. What if we do nothing into the future? And this no-build condition considers the corridor with the freeway terminating at Nineteenth Street. There are some already planned and funded improvements along Newport Boulevard, like Costa Mesa's fourth northbound lane from Seventeenth to north of Nineteenth Street, and the extension of a southbound lane from Nineteenth to just around the front of the Triangle Square area. Otherwise, all of the no-build will say, if you did nothing else today but spend and program funds for what you have, what happens in the corridor? I think we can expect what that outcome will be, continued congestion and diversion of traffic to other routes. A subsequent evaluation concept is the freeway as it is now currently programmed with Caltrans. There is a freeway agreement for this alternative. It is on the books. It's incorporated in the master plan of arterial highways. What are the effects of this in the community? And when I speak to effects, it goes back to not just congestion relief, but all of the other elements that have been expressed through that purpose and need, community impacts, business impacts, parking, environmental issues associated with each one of these, and ultimately constructibility. There was a third alternative concept that was requested by OCTA, and this is a rational one to put on the table, and that is to say, what in the existing system can be eked out within the ultimate, or within the existing right-of-way? Are there general improvements that can be accomplished that we don't know about today that don't have major right-of-way impacts that will facilitate some congestion relief? And we found a couple of them, and they will have some limited relief along the corridor. They include extending that southbound lane along Newport so that you have a continuous eight-lane segment from Nineteenth to Seventeenth. There's also the incorporation of bus turnouts instead of bus stops so that the flow of traffic isn't impinged by a stopping transit system. And then there are some modest traffic signal improvements that can be made through the corridor to improve the progression both north and south. While these are available, are low-cost and on the table, they have very minor to moderate improvements in the long term. They may have some real benefit in the short term and should be considered as something to do maybe in the immediate future. Now we start to say, what else is in the deck? And this is where your staffs, the consultant team, and your elected officials really started to throw a lot of paint on the canvas, if you will, and a lot of these are in reaction to what we heard, both from the public and from those that have been part of this process over the last five or six months. One includes, we heard from a number of the folks in the east side of Costa Mesa and the west side, that one objective of this study should be to get people to their ultimate destination in this area quickly. If you live in this general location of Costa Mesa, the east side and the heights, to fight through the traffic along Newport Boulevard becomes untenable during those peak commute hours. Are there things that we can do along this corridor and within this area to get people in and out of these communities to achieve that objective? And they include things such as one-way couplets along the east-west streets and north-south streets, possible introduction of roundabouts at two-way stop-controlled intersections. There are some additions of a pedestrian bridge that goes over Newport Boulevard to try and link the two sides. I would add that anything that is deemed to be palatable in this concept can be transferred to any one of the subsequent alternatives that you may see. I think it would be foolish for us to also not see that this may have some very serious effects to just the general flow and quality of life in the east side and the Newport Heights area. However, if we heard that as one of the purposes and the needs, we must address it, analyze it, evaluate it, and if need be, rule it out. But it should be on the table so that if the question ever comes up, why didn't you look at that? Well, in fact, we did. Another alternative answers the question, well, why not just continue adding lanes? Is there a conventional arterial solution? And I think, as you see here, in order to achieve level of service D or better conditions, we're looking at upwards of twelve lanes of travel along Newport Boulevard. You're talking about an additional, at minimum, hundred feet of right-of-way to accommodate that. That I don't think is something that we will want to pursue, but again, if the objective is that flow and mobility, one solution being a conventional arterial, let's take a look at it and rule it out. If you consider the Newport Boulevard corridor to be a garden hose, why not take a look at just the two ends? If we can fix the two ends, would traffic flow along that corridor better? And in this alternative, what we're looking at is a set of ramps and braids at the Nineteenth Street end to get traffic to and from the freeway, separated from that which would move north and south along Newport Boulevard. Likewise, the same type of solution at the end where Superior would come in to Newport Boulevard, thus reducing a lot of the demand for this, what is now a triple-left turn lane. This has some overhead structures that you see represented here, would have some significant visual effects, we believe at this point, and additional right-of-way, but it answers the question again, are we, do we have a solution that would just look at the terminal ends and would provide the congestion relief that everybody's looking forward to? Moving on, is there an overhead type of solution? If the, if the ends aren't enough, should we consider a viaduct structure, as you see here, to go overhead and separate out the traffic so that that which has a destination further south of Industrial Way would have its own track, and that which would want to percolate into these areas would have its, the at-grade Newport Boulevard? And then finally, the cut-and-cover tunnel solution where that same concept of separating the two traffics would be accomplished, not overhead, but by a tunnel-type structure that could be carved out of a cut and then covered again. You would have the traffic that is destined for either south of Industrial or north of Nineteenth in its own path, and that, again, which would have destinations in this general area along a more conventional arterial highway. These are the set of concepts that have been arrived at over, at this point, this five- or six-month process. This is not necessarily exhaustive. We still have much more outreach to do. Most importantly, we have some serious evaluation, analysis of traffic volume of these environmental and community issues to really flush these out and vet these alternatives and anything else that might arise through the outreach process. We've met at your Newport Harbor Area Chamber of Commerce with representatives of your Government Affairs Committee. There's been invitations to the residents of the Newport Heights area to attend community meetings. We look forward to more of those so that we can make sure that at the end of the day, we have addressed the purpose and need for this project, have evaluated it transparently, and arrived at at least two, three, if Glenn is correct, four possible solutions to carry forward into a subsequent stage. So at this point, that is our presentation, and both Glenn, myself, and Mayor Protem Mansour are available if you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Councilman Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate OCTA. I think LSA is one of the most competent consulting firms in the country, and having them on this case, I think, is a great asset, and I want to compliment you on the creativity and the alternatives that you've brought forward, and to welcome my friend Mayor Protem Mansour to Newport Beach, and this is one of those areas where the city of Newport Beach and the city of Costa Mesa need to be cooperative, and I think that there's a sense on both sides that that's where we need to go with this to solve what is a very significant problem for these neighbors. Obviously, as I understand it, about half the traffic of people that come off of the 55 actually dispersed through the neighborhoods, and about half of them go on to Coast Highway. So from Newport Beach's perspective, obviously, the issue is how do we keep from creating significant problems either in our neighborhoods along with those in Costa Mesa, and how do we prevent simply sort of like a rat and a snake moving the problem down to Coast Highway and creating a difficult situation there? And I commend Tony for some of those alternatives which appear not to do that initially. This is a process that's going to require a lot of community input, and it's going to require a lot of back and forth between the two cities and cooperation at the state level as we seek funding for this, and I know, speaking for myself, look forward to this effort, and I appreciate the briefing and the information that's been brought forward and the willingness to make sure that the design process is sensitive to the needs of Newport Beach.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I wonder if there was consideration also as a variation on the theme here. I recollect around Burbank Airport and other places where I've seen underpasses combined with side routes so that through traffic going through a busy intersection can simply go under that intersection and continue on. This would not be a completely buried, covered tunnel all the way, but at key intersections affords the ability for through traffic to keep moving.
So that's a very good point to make, Councilmember Hen, and what we have to date at least is that vertical terminal solution. If we can look at other places to separate those, grade-separate those if need be within this corridor, that's something that would avail itself. The issue that we do have is a very short distance, and there are some just geometric limits that we have in here, but something that we'll certainly take a look at.
Could you explain, Tony, what a freeway agreement is exactly? You mentioned that, that had already been executed.
I would like to defer to Mr. Campbell to go into more detail about that.
Well, it's an agreement between the data California and the local agencies. Costa Mesa was a signatory, and I believe that Newport Beach, but I'm not sure if they were. I know that they were concerned with one of the alternatives that was presented back in 1985, which ran through the city. The freeway would have come through the city, I think, and they expressed opposition to that. At that time, the proposal for the freeway was, remained then short of the city limits, which is why it ends where it's proposed, north of the city. But I believe that Costa Mesa then was the only, then city signatory on the south end of it, but it's one that sets up that they approved the alternative, and it was also, I had an EIR on it, and it was environmentally cleared at that time as well.
Councilmember Hen, or Webb, did you have a comment?
Yeah. A freeway agreement is a document that Caltrans enters into with all the various different agencies that are along the routes that they put together as far as alignments, and once an agreement is, once an alignment has been established and a freeway agreement has been executed, then Caltrans can add that into their design program and ultimately get it built. In this particular instance, Newport wasn't, as best of my recollection, was not a party to the freeway agreement because we had, in 1985 at least, we had a charter amendment back in 1971 or seventy... back in 1971 or '72 that said that we had to go to a vote of the people if we were to enter into any agreements to build freeways within the city limits of Newport Beach. We did have to go to a vote of the people on the extension of Route 73 freeway, and it passed very easily, but in this particular area, I don't believe we would have much of a chance. Back in the '60s, we actually had executed freeway agreements for the extension of 55 down on a route along Superior. We had one for 73, the Coronel Mar freeway, that went down to Coast Highway along MacArthur Boulevard. So that those agreements have been rescinded in those areas so that, to the best of my knowledge and from my historical background, I don't believe there are any unbuilt freeway agreements within Newport Beach.
Okay. Well, I assume that's because there's transition structures that, or at Industrial Way, that extend the freeway right-of-way into Newport Beach that we have to get into that? Is that correct?
In this particular instance, in the alignment that was adopted, they drew a line. Industrial Way actually isn't in the city of Newport Beach. The extension of 15th Street, which is about 300 feet from Industrial Way, is the city boundary. And the alignments and all of the transition lanes and everything else completely stayed out of Newport Beach in the one that was adopted. And that was done so that we would not have to, Newport Beach would not have to be a party to it.
Alan?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a point that I was asking Glenn about. I think what you're referring to, the freeway agreement, is different than what's on the current master plan of arterial highways. Is that basically yes, is the answer to that?
No, it is.
It is the same. Okay. Well, one of the major concerns that we had with that, and just to give a little more detail, is the blue area. If that went through, that would take out a major portion of our downtown and some residential area. That's one of the major concerns with that alternative, and I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Okay. Well, my, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, and that is one of the reasons that we're looking at alternatives.
Okay. Well, I guess that led, would lead to my next question. That is that the cut-and-cover alternative, that would be designed in a way that it would avoid us having to enter into a freeway agreement also? Or not?
Each of the alternatives that, well, I would start with, we're not to the point yet where we really fully understand what the process would be for any one of these alternatives there. That is about the level of detail that we're at today. All of these would affect state right-of-way. Caltrans is a party to all of this planning that we're doing and ultimately would have to give their consent and approval through that Caltrans development process. If it is not a freeway as defined by the California State Department of Transportation, I don't believe a freeway agreement would be required, but it certainly would require their review, approval, for anything that would happen within the state right-of-way.
The one thing I wanted to point out, though, is that all of the alternatives that we presented, the construction of that remains short of Newport Beach. They do not actually enter into the city. The flow, of course, would, if it increased the flow, and that's one of the things we're trying to look at in evaluating the alternatives, is what happens as you increase the capacity of the 55 north of the city? It probably will have some impact, and we will be looking at that, but the construction itself remains north of that point.
The point that Mr. Curry made was very, I think is very important for us to look at, and we've mentioned that in several of our meetings, of the fact that only about 50% of the traffic is through traffic and the other of it, the rest of it needs to be able to find its way to either side of Newport Boulevard to provide the access either into the east, Costa Mesa and Newport areas, or into the areas westerly of Newport Boulevard. And that's one of the things, points I've made in a lot of the meetings, is that we want to make sure that we don't encourage people to bypass through the downtown area and then create problems at Coast Highway and Newport Boulevard, because if we're not careful, that could happen. One other thing, just on the, this particular free agreement and the environmental document that was done with that, that was the environmental document that we used to do the arches interchange improvements.
Okay. Well, how would, if the through traffic is going through there already, combined with local traffic, how would we end up having, if we separated the through traffic from the local traffic, how would that have a negative impact at Coast Highway?
If you were to encourage people to stay on the freeway, the, either the tunnel or the above-grade area, instead of, I mean, and go all the way through, and you had a larger number of people doing that, and the people didn't bleed off at either 19th Street or 17th Street, then you're going to end up having increased traffic on Coast Highway, I mean, on Newport Boulevard at that particular location. Now, in the tourist season, in the summertime, you're going to have fewer people that are familiar with the area that may not necessarily know where they're going, that would stay on to the end of the freeway. I think that it's, we have found, and one of the reasons why we have so much congestion now, is that there are a lot of people using 17th Street and 19th Street to go either westerly or easterly of the route. And I personally don't think that we would like to see that traffic on 17th Street, for instance, move down to Coast Highway, or a large portion of that move down to Coast Highway to make its connection over to Dover, as opposed to using 17th Street around to Dover.
Okay. Well, it seems, just looking at it superficially, that, you know, if you're going down to Coast Highway, you're either going to, if you're on Newport Boulevard, you're either going to go down Newport Boulevard or maybe bleed off to Superior and go down that way. What other routes are you going to take to go to Coast Highway besides Superior?
Well, you have to look at the traffic and which directions they're going. That traffic that's going to Huntington Beach would use Superior. The traffic that is going to the easterly portions of Newport Beach would end up using Coast Highway or 17th Street. And there's a fairly substantial amount of people that would go in those directions. So I think that one of the things, one of the purposes of the study is to make sure that we try to handle all of the needs and make sure that we can try to come up with something that is beneficial to improving traffic on Newport Boulevard without reducing the ability to go, to serve the areas either east or west of Newport Boulevard.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Zansky?
Not so much a question, but a comment that I've made in the past, and I'll just reiterate it today so that we don't forget. In our meetings with, obviously with OCTA and Costa Mesa and staffs and the officials, I've consistently brought up the fact that we, although it's not part of this project and not part of this study, that we do have the 19th Street Bridge project out there. It is on the master plan of arterial highways, and that I would expect that we would see concurrent progress with that project. You know, kind of, if it's not part of this project, I'd like to see both projects move forward.
Yes, and I think even in this project, we'll be looking at the impacts that any of the alternatives that we have, have on the traffic across the river on PCH, and whatever needs that would have for further capacity. I think in the follow-on effort where we have narrowed down the alternatives to fewer and we kind of know what we're looking at, that at that point is where we are hoping to be able to then really take a close look at that issue as either a part of it or a parallel effort that would then move forward with it.
Okay. Councilman DeGel?
It sounds as if there's been some previous environmental work that might be educational in terms of what we might encounter as we carry out this project.
Go ahead. The EIR from the, that resulted in the freeway agreement is part of our research effort. We have all that. While it's very informative, it is somewhat historical, and we will be making sure that that is updated to reflect what the current conditions are. The level of environmental review that we're going to be doing here is very cursory, just to be able to say, you know, can we, is there a poison pill in any one of these? But we will be, it is part of our record. We will be using that in as much as it is good for us to look at.
The EIR was actually signed in '85. A lot of the work was done in '83 and '84. But each, the depth of the way, as we go into each phase subsequent to this, the level of effort on that subject will get more refined, certainly, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, public comments. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Anthony Peca.
Say your name again, please.
Anthony Peca. Thanks for allowing me to step up here. Just some things that perhaps would be of interest to you or something that may be important for you to consider. I heard some rhetoric pertaining to the existing accepted plan referred to in the EIR study, and that that would be considered. The only thing that I would like to bring to your attention is that there is an existing plan and agreement, the old plan to carry it down, carry that freeway down to Industrial, there just outside the city of Newport Beach. But also contained in that plan, as historic, as old as it might be, as Glenn mentioned, what it does contain, that is of paramount importance, that should be considered in your evaluation of these proposals, is the protection for the residential community immediately east of that corridor in the problematic area between 17th and 19th Street. I'm familiar with that. I have a copy of that that I can certainly allow you to use if you needed to refer to that. But it does contain the mitigative measures to protect that area of the community, you know, to keep it a residential community, keep it, it address the property values and such. And I know that that's in the city of Costa Mesa. But in your consideration of these alternatives, it would probably be advisable to consider that any alternative or any change to remove the existing plan or agreement will also remove those environmental, those EIR, EIS, conditions of protection for that neighborhood as well as Newport Heights area. Now, that was abandoned, those conditions, if the project, the accepted and approved project was not abandoned, automatically, the environmental procedures would have been obeyed. But in fact, it was not in 1992. It was abandoned. And also with that abandonment was all the environmental considerations. So to remove it from a master plan without first considering, you're also abandoning the concerns of that neighborhood. And in doing so, that would stop any movement on this. I'm certain it would. Just as you wouldn't want on and off ramps, your residential streets in Newport Beach to be used as on and off ramps, to save money or to do away with this master plan. So I'm just saying that it probably is something that should be considered. We're working on it and look forward to finding some feasible alternatives that don't further deteriorate. And also to mention, if I may, that to proceed with this without considering environmental impact, protection, or mitigation efforts to replace those that are contained in the existing accepted plan would be a, probably a mistake, I would imagine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Okay. Seeing no one, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tim DeGel for the next item here.
Okay. Item three, tsunami warning, siren request for proposal. City manager, do we have a staff report?
We do have a staff report, and this item has been talked about several times at study sessions previously. Councilman Hen has raised the issue. So based upon those discussions, staff has prepared a request for proposals, but before we do that, we thought we would bring it by the city council and see if you think it is adequate and give you an opportunity to discuss it so that we could make adequate changes if the council feels like we should put it out for a request for proposal. So Chief Lewis will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, here we are. I'm going to go run over some of the things that I think that we're looking for. We're ready to put this out to, as the proposal out to the vendors, and there's a number of them that are waiting in the wings, but we want to make sure, I want to get direction from you to make sure that we're on the right course, in which way we're headed. Some of the issues that I'm going to address, and actually could be actually questions, is what is the purpose of the notification system? We'll talk about, it's fairly obvious, but what will be the geographic area covered by this system, just in the inundation area, tsunami only, or is it going to be citywide? Again, what type of system will we purchase, voice or siren? I will tell you that the RFP is basically set up in regards to a siren and in the inundation areas only. We'll look at some of the other types, and I'll take direction from you if it's going to be something different that you would want. And I'll look at what the request for the proposal will look like. Again, I think we all pretty much know that the notification system is to alert in times of disaster emergencies. It's basically pretty rudimentary. It's not rocket science. When the siren goes off, it really is just a, for the people that live in those areas, a heads-up. They're going to be asked, "Okay, I hear the siren. What do I do next?"" And again, I'll talk about a component that really is the bigger portion, which is education, getting people to understand what that means if we go with the siren. But basically, once we sound a siren, it begins the process that they now are, they need to do something. And so it's pretty straightforward. Sirens can be used for earthquakes, hazmat incidents, fires, floods, and all disasters and emergencies. If you look at a lot of cities that have siren systems, they list an enormous amount sometimes of benefits. I think these are pretty straightforward. If you go down some of the benefits, I think it may be a little bit of a stretch on what they're used for, but I think these are pretty straightforward. As far as notifying people, we wouldn't have floods, but what you would do with it then depends on what you want to do after the siren sounds. Siren sounds, what do you do? What we're going to ask people to do is turn on their radios or the television, because if we have something coming on from any major event, especially with the tsunami, it comes down, it goes to the county, and the county would then put that through the system. And as you have seen on, maybe, I don't know if you saw it during the Malibu fires, after when the rains came, I was watching TV in here in Newport. Down at the bottom, there was an EAS, which is the Emergency Alert System. Kept scrolling across the bottom, telling people that if you live in that area, leave that area, leave that area. And it kept scrolling, scrolling the whole time. That's an EAS, and that's what we would expect people to do. Once they hear the sirens, they go over, turn their TV set on, turn the radio on, and listen to what it does. And that system is already in place in California, in the county, that that would notify people what to do. So it can be used for any of those. Obviously, if we're just making it in the tsunami inundation area, what we're saying is it's just for tsunami. If you were to give us direction to say we want them throughout the city for other purposes, we can surely do that, too. And again, they would be used depending on what area we put them in. Geographic area covered by the notification, again, if it was just the tsunami inundation area, it would just take care of that coast area, and these concentric circles represent the areas that we would be covering, that would be notified. Again, if it went to a citywide coverage for any other reason that we want to put them in here, some of the ones I mentioned, then we would have to look at doing them throughout the entire city. And, you know, in fact, I will say that that's what our neighbor to the north, Huntington Beach, has them throughout their whole city, for purposes of what they state, they want to use them for. So again, we have to decide. So again, we have to decide, and I'll take direction from you, we're moving ahead as if this is for a, in the tsunami inundation area. And if I take direction, then we will look at the entire city if we're going to go there. And again, the RFP would need to reflect that, so that the people, vendors coming in would have to give us a, you know, bids on those systems if they want that. So anyway, that's where we're heading, and I'll take direction from you on that. Types of system, there's two types, yes.
Chief Lewis, are you comfortable with questions as you go along?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, people feel free to chime in.
Yeah. Two types, there is, again, we're moving forward with the siren notification, there actually is voice notification, there's a number of vendors out there, and I guarantee you, the hotbed of notification systems now across the country is on college campuses, you can be fairly well versed on that with, watching the news. And a lot of university systems and colleges and high schools are putting them in where they actually will talk, smaller areas, but they're going rapid with that intervention that I've seen with all the vendors we've been talking to. They're pre-recorded messages before an emergency, they can be recorded and broadcast during the emergency, and they're easy to understand directions. I would venture to say that some of the technology on that, from what I've talked to other people, have said that that's, still has to be developed. There are some vendors that said, ours are the best, you can hear it as far as you would potentially maybe hear a siren, we'd have to flush that out. And we'll do that by, in the RFP is making, if we accept any of their proposals, they'll have to do a competition, I guess per se, or we were going to view all of those, that they've done other plates of the state, parts of the state where they will come in and put each of them up, and we'll listen to each one to see what we think is the best. Because it is, I tell you, it's tough to find out how these sound, because nobody will, if you go to their city, they're not going to turn them on for you to hear, so they have demonstrations that they'll do. I went to Huntington Beach the other day, and I can tell you that they, they do test them on the first Friday of every month, but they do not run them very long. So by the time you think you're ready to hear it, it's, it's over, so it's tough. Siren notification is what we were headed towards, obviously, it's, siren sound will be issued during the emergency, and it indicates that they need to turn on their radios or televisions, and they'll look at the EAS, and that will tell them what to do. If it's an evacuation, it will say you will need to evacuate, there's a wave that's coming that's expected to come in X amount of hours, you need to do this. We put the last bullet, it may be difficult to educate, it's not insurmountable, it's like anything else that we have to do in the community, it's an educational thing, it would be a continual education, just it is for earthquake or anything else, we need to always get that out. And it's difficult to get everybody on board, because I'll run into people that will say, you know, I don't know what to do during an earthquake, and I'm a little surprised, because, you know, I have people that are working full-time, and a lot of our CERT programs and all of our emergency personnel that are going out and speaking in HOAs, homeowners associations, they're non-stop. So when people say they haven't heard, we're always thinking of ways, how can we get that message out? Mass marketing, and you know, I mean, we've tried everything, and we can do mailers, they're very expensive, comes a little cost prohibitive, we've done that, we have on our websites, you get on the city website, you can find out. So there's a lot of ways that people can find out. But as far as the sirens, when they hear them, again, it just means, what do I do? They need to know what to do, and so it's an educational process for them to turn on the radios, television, it may say you need to evacuate, so. Real quickly, the costs, these are estimates, we talked to some of the vendors out there with voice, I can tell you, obviously, if you have voice, it's nice, because people can give, it can be specific instructions, but to do that is very expensive. As you can see, if you were just to do the tsunami inundation area, there was an estimate of nine sixty, if you do a citywide voice, one point eight million. Siren notification, if you did the tsunami area, you're going to run up to two fifty. Citywide would be four hundred thousand for sirens to cover.
Councilman Webb?
Yes.
Chief, and the differences in prices here, is that because the, the voice notification would require many more units than the, the sound with the siren one?
That's my understanding, when I talk to the vendors, again, they stole the virtues of that they can extrapolate that way out far, but I, I think it's because they come back in, when you pin them down, it doesn't go as far as the sirens, so they need more of them.
Okay, for a siren, are we, are we thinking about, what, ten locations, and voice, we're looking at twenty or twenty-five or thirty or whatever?
If we were looking, excuse me, I'm sorry.
What's the relationship approximately?
Yes, in the inundation area, when we were looking at sirens, we were looking at how far we could get with the amount of monies that we would have to operate with, and there were, some that were saying that they could do it three, with three sirens, some would do it five, and so with the voice, you'd almost have to double that, just because of that. And I think that we had taken worst-case scenario, wind, some of the other things. Sirens are, it's pretty easy, they things, they just wail. And you talk about voice, that was the problem that we saw in Marina Del Rey when they did some testing there, all of a sudden, it's like, what did they say? And you couldn't exactly hear it. The siren, there was no doubt that you could hear it.
Councilman Gardner?
Also, I think a real disadvantage of a voice system is we're a tourist city, and that's going to be much harder to notify, I would think, that people are really going to be confused then, at least with a siren, they're going, what does that mean? I know it means something.
Correct.
Look at the next guy and say, well, I guess we're supposed to get the hell out of here.
Councilman Rosensky?
Yeah, but isn't, isn't the idea that they're going to hear the voice over the loudspeaker?
They would hear a voice over the loudspeaker, which would give them direction, so there would be clarity in the fact that they know what to do.
Yeah, I think that would be a lot more clear.
I can never hear, though, when the helicopter flies over and says something, and says, I'm like, what? What?
I guess my question was, before you asked yours, was, I can't, I assume that the voice-activated system or notification system can also handle a siren?
Some of the companies can do that, yes.
So like, you can have the siren go off, and then, you know, alert, alert, you know, evacuate the beach or something, or proceed to high ground, or, so you can kind of get the both, best of both systems?
Correct, and there can be a combination of both, and so they suggest that in certain areas on the beach, they can do voice, and then in other areas, they don't, they do not need to use voice. I think that in the RFP, that we will have a day that we are going to do testing on each one of them, and that we're going to have as many people there necessary to listen, because they will demonstrate it for us, so that we, in our own opinion, whoever we pick for the proposals can say, sounds all right, but I just don't think that's going to work.
To follow up on that, all right, sort of assuming that people are outdoors, how does the voice system work when people are in big buildings? An office building, do they hear it? I wouldn't think they would hear it the same way they would hear a siren.
My, my understanding is no, but that, of course, the vendors say, but it's actually pretty good, and they can hear it, but you know, you go back and forth, well, how would they hear that? I know they can hear the siren, but I don't know that they can hear the voice.
Luckily, there's probably not too many office buildings in the beach inundation area.
But I, that's another point, because I, I don't, I've always felt that it shouldn't be just for the inundation zone, because when we look at what your staff has prepared as far as likelihoods, the tsunami's way down there, where we have earthquake, fire, which we might very well need to alert people, obviously, even in an earthquake, you know what's happened, but fires, siren notification would be great, and that might be up where there are a lot of buildings, so.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Curry?
Chief, as a practical matter, in an actual emergency, if the sirens were to go off because we had a tsunami event, wouldn't, in fact, what happened would be that several dozen of our police fire and emergency vehicles would activate their loudspeakers and proceed through the neighborhoods, advising people with the loudspeaker on what to do in terms of evacuation. I know, we woke up the bright hour of four in the morning by a police car, letting us know that a car had sheared off a gas main up the street.
That is correct. In fact, the, the last time that we had the tsunami incident was before I was here, a while back, but in fact, the lifeguards did go up and down the beach with their loudspeakers, saying, we need to have everybody leave the beach and head home.
So we already have a system of giving people verbal instruction, once they sort of, once we sort of get their attention?
Yes, we will be doing that with our emergency vehicles.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Councilman Hen.
Yeah, so the other concern that I have about the voice systems is that, it's my understanding, and I suppose I could be corrected here, that the various environmental conditions, they can be highly variable, and that that can highly affect the carry of intelligible sound as far as it might in your demonstration tests, you know? If you've got a storm, wind, wind direction can actually affect the carry of sound.
Right.
And so I see lots of reasons why this sound carry system could be problematic. I kind of like the idea of having alternatives, you know, having a dual-use system, that might be a good solution.
And they do make those. They found in Marina Del Rey, when they were testing all of them, at a number of vendors there, was that the technology on the voice just wasn't there yet. Some vendors, though, who have straight voice will say, but ours is there, and that's yet to be seen. So I mean, that would be, we will look at all of them and then, and then test all of them, if they're, if they're able to meet all the other criteria within the RFP, if they're a potential bidder, we will look at all of them, but right now, we are looking more at just siren, because we know that that's the most viable way, but there's other, if your direction is to look at combination, including that, we can do that, too.
Just one other quick question while we're on the money here. My recollection of the newspaper article I saw for Huntington Beach was that they got citywide coverage for less money than what we're seeing up there on the screen of any of those alternatives. Do you happen to know why it was apparently so inexpensive for them to get citywide coverage of a siren system?
I think at the time, they actually, and I have to ask Katie, our emergency service manager, that they did receive grant funding on some of their sirens.
They retrofitted their current sirens.
They had the leftover ones that they had from the civil defense, and they used a lot of those. Most cities I know have had those, and they've taken them out. They had theirs, and they just retrofitted them, so they got it, they got it a better price.
Councilman Webb?
Refresh my memory on how the tsunami inundation zone was determined?
You know what, I'll let, on certiorati, I'll let Katie, she can address that.
How did they determine the inundation, the current inundation area that we had? What we did is, USC did a study on the inundation area for Orange County. So we took their study, their suggestions on the coverage that we need, I believe it's a mile and a half inland, and we had our GIS mapping folks put an overlay of the inundation area on our city map with a suggestion from the USC study. So that's how we initially got the inundation area for our city.
So in other words, SC just kind of took a rule of the thumb and said, we're going to have high waters that are going to go a mile and a half inland?
Yes, since we haven't had too many tsunamis here in Orange County, they went, they went and looked at Sumatra and other places that tsunamis have hit, they took elevation into consideration and figured, okay, when you reach a mile to a mile and a half inland, that was pretty much, I guess, the safe zone, they called it, in all of the tsunami situations.
That, that must have been combined with an elevation study.
Yes.
A maximum mile and a half combined with elevations, low elevations.
I think thirty feet is the elevation that we looked at.
That's kind of interesting, because I know that initially, when the federal government was doing the flood protection zones for the city of Newport Beach, they came up with something similar to that. Upon further evaluation and studies based on the presence of Catalina Island, the configuration of our coast, it was shown that the tsunami inundation might get to elevation thirteen, which in most instances would not even totally cover the peninsula. So I was, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that, that we are reacting to things that have happened in other areas, and geographically, they probably wouldn't happen here. I, but yet I still understand that everybody's concerned about not wanting to be involved in a tsunami. I think the last time I asked the question was, when was the last tsunami in Orange County? You indicated it was in the sixties, and it was two or three feet wave height.
Yeah, nineteen sixty-four was the last tsunami.
And it was, how much in, how much of effect in Orange County?
Long Beach, yeah, Long Beach suffered more damage than we did, Huntington Beach even saw more damage. I think Newport Beach was two or three feet.
What damage did they actually suffer?
They saw damage in the harbor with the boats and the moorings. I don't believe there was damage on land.
And the water, the water fluctuated how much?
I'd have to look, I can't.
Okay, it was, if I remember correctly, it was very, very small.
What the study did show, USC study, they predicted a maximum wave height of thirty-three feet. So that was the, from the study of USC, for Orange County, looking at the map, I guess, of the contour line of the coast.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Having, having experienced water sloshing up and down the boardwalk in front of my house within the last two years, I, I have a little greater concern than you just enumerated, Don.
And I think the sirens themselves, if you look, if you take one and put it in the right spot, it'll come to the edge of the water, and actually, the other side of that concentric circle, even if you used a conservative, they'll say a mile and a half, you can hear it, even if you came back to a mile, that is a pretty safe area that you're into, so that sound, if, so you're, you're covered pretty much as far as the inundation area, you're going to be in a safe area. They're very, very conservative with, I'm being conservative with the concentric circles. So it doesn't take much to cover the entire peninsula area. So when you say inundation area, you can put it in further, a mile and a half, but at some point, you're, you're, you're very safe, and you don't even need sirens. I mean, you're up above the elevation of the water quite a bit.
What do you consider from a, the odds of a, of a tsunami coming are compared to, say, an earthquake, probably a thousand to one?
There's probably a higher likelihood for an earthquake. I will say this, though, that we did have a list once, that listed in, in a scale of what we thought, but I will say that was very unscientific, and it was actually very logical people that sat down to come up with what they thought, the number one, two, three, four, and we came down with a list. And so tsunami was down lower, but it was not done on any scientific measure, it was done by people who were giving their estimations of probabilities and statistics, but it was not a scientific, anything beyond that.
Chief, exactly what would be the purpose of this system in the event of an earthquake? Because presumably, the earthquake would happen before the sirens went off. Would you wake people up and let you know, let them know you had an earthquake, or what would we do?
All, I would think that it would do is that the same effect that if you're training somebody, when you hear it, what do I do now? They'll know, okay, I go turn on the TV, which they may do anyway, or the radio, and see what the emergency alerting system tells me to do, if it's scrolling and said, you have an earthquake, you need to do this or that. I will say that there are, you know, if you're talking about citywide, there may be some more cost-effective ways, in fact, we talk about mass notification systems that are out there, there's quite a few of those, and that can be another avenue of getting things. It can be used in the inundation area also, but that's a whole other project.
And in the event of a fire, more specifically, a brush fire, presumably, we would be rolling equipment with sirens to that far in advance if somebody make it a decision that it's time to activate the system. I would suspect that somebody's going to actually see the fire before they can flip the switch.
Could be, I, you know, it will be, it'd have to be a large, large fires that we've had in the past with Laguna, so then now you can get, you're giving people direction of where to go, which direction, and things along that line, but you will probably have some indicators long before that that you need to do some things.
Senator Gardner?
You keep talking about radios and television, and what about the computer? Will we have something that they could go to the city website and it would have something on it? Because I'm thinking particularly, again, with visitors, they may not be in their car, they may not be near their car, they may have come down, they may even have come down on a bus, which would be novel. So they don't have access to a radio, they don't have access to television, but they do their phone with them, and their phone may be, they may be able to get online. So will we have, is that part of it?
Excuse me, excuse me, correct, the cell phones companies, that's, that's a whole arena that we haven't gone into, they've, they've been, as I talk to them, a little more hesitant to jump into the mass notification system on that, but that, I think they understand that that's where we're going, but I don't get much feedback when I talk to the cell companies, though I think it's probably too tough to do, but I may just not be talking to the right people on that. But there are, that is obviously, because I'm finding that more and more people are using cell phones, they're not even using phones at home anymore, or hard lines are using cell phones.
Mayor Pro Tim Dagel?
Yes, okay, so the siren goes off citywide, then the fun starts. Logistically, can you cover the city with voice command, or how is that going to be played out?
Well, I, you mean with the voice activate, voice activation, if you, if that was what...
Or let's say there wasn't a voice activation, there's just a siren, and there was no fog, I mean, can you, you know, through the police cars and radios, I mean, how would you logistically follow that up with voice command?
Well, if you're looking at the entire city, that would be very, very difficult to get everybody out there. In fact, we have procedures in place already on earthquake, our first engine, engine companies, their job is to actually go out and do a windshield survey of those places within their district that are, we feel that are target hazards as far as hospitals, schools, things that we think are important, so that's their first responsibility to do that. If you're talking about earthquake, then begins, if the big one happens, is we talk about the, you're, you're basically, at that point, maybe on your own, there's only so much we're going to be able to do, and that's where the community emergency response teams come into place, and all of those functions, but we talk about going out and trying to notify everybody with the loudspeakers systems within the rigs in the entire city, that'd be very difficult. We can do it in an area where we got, it's contained in the inundation area.
Okay, so, so if you were to have a siren citywide without any follow-up notification, couldn't that create its own chaos?
It's possible, and that's why I said education is important, because a lot of people will not know why that siren's going off, and that's why... not know why that siren's going off, and that's why we're going to need to continue to educate and educate, because they're going to hear a siren. Some will ignore it, some may panic. There's always that possibility, and I think that that exists on the peninsula, because in Huntington Beach where I was, they had the sirens. If you think about it, all streets leading north away from the beach, there's lots of them. We have a little problem down here on the peninsula, we only have a couple access points off, and they can become bottlenecked very quickly. So we got a little more tougher problem getting people off the peninsula than we do other cities.
So if we could narrow it down a little bit, which incident do you think would utilize a siren?
Well, I think its original tent was, for the tsunami, was, is probably, for me, the best. I'm not going to say the other ones couldn't be. The probability of you being able to help it, help you, but maybe a little smaller for tsunami would be fine. I think there's other ways to approach the earthquake, the fires, with more of a mass notification system, which is probably far less expensive, inexpensive compared to the sirens throughout the entire city.
Okay, so the siren might be best utilized in that impact zone, or however it is you described it, and then maybe in some of the other area inundation zone. And some of the other areas, then, other forms of mass notification might be more appropriate.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, far my, Steve, it seems to me like there may be some times where we want to let people know not to evacuate.
Correct, and that's...
Maybe there is an earthquake that's a six-point, and people's first reaction is, well, let's flood the streets, and we're trying to get our, our fire personnel out to assess, you know, any damage, and we don't think there's major damage, but if they can't get around, I mean, that, that'd be a bad situation.
Right. That would be one where you talk about if you had sirens throughout the city, was the hazmat incident, because in most times, we want people to really shelter in place. It's very difficult when you have large plumes of hazmat. I've had a few where all of a sudden, we talk about, how are we going to get people out of here? It's like, I don't think we can, and now we're asking people to go out in the streets who potentially expose themselves. So our thing was to tell them to stay in their house. And the only way we did that was using police vehicles to go up and down, stay inside, close your windows, because we felt a plume was coming. So theoretically, if you had a siren in those other areas, they would, could look at the thing we would call Orange County, tell them to put an EAS out, and would say, stay in your house, close your windows. So that's a possibility. But again, there may be other ways you can do that very quickly with a mass notification call-out, that they have, for instance, reverse nine-one-one. You could reach eighty thousand people fairly quickly with a message of what to do. Again, there's problems built into that as far as other reaching people, but it is, it works pretty good with certain limitations.
Councilman Hen?
Now, having lived through the earthquake season for about ten years in the San Gabriel's, and experienced about a half dozen earthquakes, some of them pretty severe, you don't have any problem understanding that you've been through an earthquake when it happens. And so it's hard for me to understand how a siren's going to help you, but, but what can help, though? The first thing that goes through your mind is, how close was the epicenter of this quake? That's what you really want to understand, how close was it? And what's the risk of follow-up shock? And so I think there's other ways to deal with that that are probably more effective than just a mass siren system or mass notification system.
Councilman Webb?
Yeah, I, does your $250,000 estimate on the tsunami sirens include the signage that would be necessary to educate the visiting public on what to do in case of a siren? And roughly, how many hundreds of signs would have to be installed along the beach to do that?
No, it does not include the educational aspect. We do have signs already as, as far as the evacuation routes, but there are no signs, and that cost...
But we got a hundred thousand people on the beach, and a siren goes off, and probably ninety-five percent of those are not educatable from Newport Beach sources.
Right.
And so they're going to have to have some sort of signage that says, if a siren goes off, what do I do? And they're not going to have radios, and they're not going to have television sets. So what do we do in the way of signage to educate those people if we're going to have a siren system?
Councilman, I, I don't think we would be looking at signage. If we had a hundred thousand people on the beach, we would have a lot of lifeguards also on the beach. And I think the thing we would do is notify them so that they can get people to evacuate the beach.
So we don't need sirens?
No, I'm not saying we don't need sirens. It would be to tell those people what to do if a siren goes off, and, and they aren't familiar and haven't been educated with it.
And I would say, from what I was told the last time it happened, the lifeguards were able to clear the beaches actually fairly quickly.
And at night?
Well, let's put it this way, the message can be given to them fairly quickly, it may take a while for them to get off the beach.
We apparently still have a lot of people on the beaches at night, so...
Okay. Any other questions, Chief?
No, it's, I would just say that I'll go through, I think you have a copy of it, I, I won't go into all the, the scope, obviously. They'll be determining by what their recommendations are, how much they can cover, and what their sirens can do. The technical information you have in there, I won't get into all that. And the selection process, we were looking at the top three vendors, must participate in a demonstration against the other vendors. We want to actually hear the conditions in which they're going to be put. And again, the selection process will be, you know, establish have an evaluation group, and again, the top vendor will be recommended to you for acceptance, so...
Mr. Hen was one right next to his house, right?
So anyhow, I, I think the direction, all we were looking for was to understand, I'm moving forward with the, that it was going to be in the inundation area only, and that it was going to be sirens and not voice. Or we can, we'll entertain combinations if, if some of the vendors want to do that, and we'll see what those costs are. They can have several proposals that they can do, but I think that's going to be kind of cost prohibitive. But that's where the direction I was going, so I just want to know if that's where I should proceed.
Councilman Webb?
As far as I'm concerned, I think that if, if we are going to install a siren system, then I would suggest that we do the minimum amount related to the 250,000 range just along the, the area that might be most impacted by a tsunami. I, the other disasters that you have mentioned, I really can't think of an instance where you, a siren citywide would really be useful for whatever disaster you might come up with.
Okay, okay. You've convinced me. But you did bring up something else that was interesting, which is where you put them. And did Huntington Beach have a lot of nimbyism when they, or did they just, because they already had existing sirens, it wasn't an issue? Because, I mean, we have people that don't like very many things near their house.
Well, they, they actually used the ones, they used to put on the fire stations, and the fire stations were distributed out through the city geographically appropriate, and they used the old sirens. So people may in the past have heard them, but I hadn't heard that there was any objections. And the present ones that they, the newer ones that they put in, I haven't, from what we've heard, they haven't always, of course, they haven't run them full blast for a long time, it's very short durations. But that'll always be an issue, because it is going to be louder next to those where they're at. But they put them high enough to we're not, we're, we put, there are certain FEMA restrictions on them, so that in Cal OSHA, that they got, they can only be a certain height, because we don't want to obviously injure people with the sound of them. And, but some people will get it louder than others, and that'll always be an issue of where we're going to put them.
Councilman Hen?
So I guess if, if I were to just voice a point of view here, it would be that we should concentrate on the inundation zone, and I would at least like you to have a look at dual-use systems that have the capability for both siren and voice notification beyond that.
Okay.
I would hope, I guess my question is, presuming, we're presuming here, you're going to proceed with an RFP, and how, how quickly do you expect to get, actually get at that?
That should go out very quickly.
It sounds to me like maybe...
Days, a week or two, something like that.
It sounds to me like maybe we could go for an alternative, you know, you know, for just, just the siren and then a, a voice activated component to that, so that they would be separated, would be a choice at the end of the road.
That can be done rather quickly.
Okay. Your report, Tim Deegan?
Certainly, the sighting could get a little tricky with the noise. A little bit tongue-in-cheek, I know they have ringtones, do they have different siren? Do you have like a fog horn or anything like that?
I think most of them, again, I, I'm not being, trying to be flippant, but most of it wasn't rocket science, it, they're, they wail, and they're, a lot of them are pretty close to the same sound, because they wanted to project. And so they may have other, I'll, we'll check, that'll be part of what we interview, then we'll go full, find out. But I think they're pretty much all the same from what I've heard from most of the vendors.
Maybe Verizon has downloadable sirens.
Yeah, there you go, ring downs. Seems to be the consensus, though, I think, what Councilman Hen expressed.
Okay.
Councilman Curry?
Well, I would certainly concur with the recommendation of Councilmember Webb. I think we want to look at the inundation areas, we look at siren system. I, I don't have a problem with Councilmember Hen's recommendation to look at, at options, but I think we need to be cognizant of the cost. I was noting that last year, our lifeguards pulled 3,800 people out of the water and had 152,000 individual contacts with people on the beach, and perhaps the Centennial American, correct me, but I'm not aware that we've ever had a tsunami fatality in the history of our 102 years.
I'm not aware that we've had any damage, period, from a tsunami in the 102 years.
But, but it only takes one, and so I do support the deployment of the, of the sirens, but I think we need to be conscious in terms of how we're allocating resources for this project.
Any other comments? I tend to support Councilman Webb's comments, but I will say that'll be interesting, if we do it, to see the reaction of the people around the spots we choose to locate them. Very interesting. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment?
Hi, good evening, yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Dolores Auding, I live in Newport Beach, and I first talked about this item in 1996, and I want to thank you for keep, for moving forward with it. It's taken a few years, but some things move slowly, you know? Anyway, part of the, when we got a, NOAA came to our city, and we became tsunami-ready and earthquake-ready. And part of what you have to do in order to qualify for that honor is that you're supposed to have two, if you're a coastal community, I believe that you're supposed to have two different methods to, to communicate or to warn the people. And part of the issue here could be that we only have one method, and I guess that's by telephone, and we don't have another method. And so that's why the sirens are incorporated into coastal communities, because they qualify that way. So we got the award, basically, I know the lights keep going on and off without even, it's, it's a conservation mode we've now incorporated into the city. So anyway, I'm glad to see that, I hope, and that you are moving forward with putting them on the peninsula. There are many people that actually want these, believe it or not, and they might actually even want them by their homes, Mayor Webb. And I don't think that anyone would ever, Mayor Webb, excuse me, former Mayor Webb, Centennial Mayor Webb. Yeah. I don't really think that anyone's going to complain about them, and they, and they do go high enough. And I did go to, I think it was Huntington Beach or Costa Mesa, and there's a company that has a voice system, and I got a demonstration of that. It's a new system. It's expensive. I don't honestly know if it would prove to help in any way. I'm not sure that we need the city to be totally, you know, full of sirens, and if other areas want it, I guess they could beg for it later if they want to, you know? So anyway, I think it's a good thing, and I'm happy that you're doing it, and I, I think it's wonderful, and I think $250,000, I mean, let's face it, you spend $250,000 a month on all different kinds of things, and if I had to add up, you know, how many things we do in consultants and studies, and on and on and on and on, this is pocket change to a $210 million budget, and it's taken years to get here. And I think that it's the right thing to do, because it's for the health and safety of the community, and if you save one life, that would be a good thing. And we have over 350 students every day on the peninsula going to Newport Elementary and other various schools down there, and so they need to have some type of a warning system in plan. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to our next item, which is the insurance renewals.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Today we have before you three items on the council agenda, 19, 20, and 21, and we're here today to talk to you a little bit about our insurance renewals. We have almost $1.8 million in premiums that we're paying. This money, it has been approved by the council in the budget, however, our premiums came in at a little lower, so there is a savings to the city. Originally, when we came to this study session, we were going to also talk about, talk about the individual contract insurance that has been brought up in council meetings separately. However, it's gotten quite involved, and we're still getting some information together. So what we'd like to do is take that to the next finance committee meeting and discuss with them. In the meantime, the attorney's office, as well as Lauren and Risk Management are reviewing each contract individually to make sure that we have adequate coverage on our contracts. Lauren Farley, our Risk Manager, is here. She's been working very closely with her staff to put together the information. Mark Zahorian is our broker, he has been for several years with the city, and he's going to be speaking to you today, and we're here to answer any questions. I know that Councilmember Hen had some questions earlier, and we have the answers to those questions, or close, Mark is going to be able to respond to you. So I'll turn the time over to Mark Zahorian from Brown and Brown.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, again, my name is Mark Zahorian, your Insurance Representative at Brown and Brown. Before we get into this document, what I would like to do is just go over a couple of things. Barbara did mention about three questions or concerns. The first one, list of carriers and quotes that we had on the renewal. I do not have that right here, but I will forward it to Lauren tomorrow to have that available for you. But as you'll see in some of my comments, to get our prices down, we can't just work with the incumbent carrier, and we've had some changes this year. It's very critical to take a look at not only the premium, but also the coverages, and I'll give you a few examples. Also, has there been any significant change in coverage? Absolutely not. We have had no reduction in coverages as far as terms, as far as limits, on the, as far compared to the current program. And lastly, have...
Excuse me, just, just one question. I wasn't really, that wasn't a one-sided question, I was curious, because from time to time, additional riders become available, exclusions change, and additional coverages become available. And so I was also curious whether we picked up any additional coverages, as well as whether or not we sacrificed any coverages.
The answer is no, nothing significant. We stay on top of the changes to the policy, not only at renewal, but as, every quarter, we basically go out and discuss with the city if there's any significant changes by endorsement. So this renewal, the answer is no. Some of the quotes and optional coverages that were available as far as policies for different disciplines of coverage, some of the reasons why they were not competitive was because in the coverages, and not necessarily the premium. The premium was equal, but there were lesser, lesser coverage. So there was not a change either way, significant change. The last item was, did we consider increasing coverage or reduce the self-insured retention since our premiums have gone down? I'll give you a couple examples where the answer is yes. As far as the self-insured retention, especially in the area of general liability, we always take that into consideration. But for a city your size and scope, a $500,000 retention is very appropriate. Even if we were in a situation, not that we could, but if we found available a retention that was much lower, and being in the soft market, you would think it's a buy, the problem or the difficulty with that is the market hardens, then all of a sudden, you are going back and just gambling with one or two years, and not having a consistent plan of action long-term. Over a period of about 10 years, we went down from a million-dollar SIR to the current level of 500,000. And within that level of coverage under the general liability insurance, one of the subparts, employment practices liability insurance, had a million-dollar self-insured retention up until about two years ago, and we were successful in getting that reduced to the standard of 500,000. So, and I will go into a couple examples where we did increase coverage, and that coverage has become more affordable, and I believe through proper management will continue to be affordable for the city. And I'll go through that when we get into that document. Did I answer those questions? With the exception of one. A brief overview of Brown and Brown, I personally have been your insurance broker for over 18 years. Brown and Brown has been around for 68 years. We're the sixth largest independent brokerage in the US, and we are in 35 states. We're the sixth-largest independent brokerage in the U.S., and we are in 35 states. As far as the marketing process, marketing process for me is very, very critical. We start in November gathering the data, and really even earlier on. When I see significant changes in the city, we might change the insurance policy midterm, but as far as the renewal goes, we start in November. And at that point, once we gather the information, I start hand-delivering submissions to various carriers in December. And then after that point, I have meetings on a periodic basis with staff to basically have full disclosure. I don't want there to be surprises ever on the insurance. So I believe in full disclosure and let the staff know along the way where we are, what I expect, what changes are going to occur, if any, and what are the market conditions. Now, getting into the final run of negotiating the premium, I have on the agenda a week of February 11th, but many times, although the city gives me permission to bind coverage, I might wait even a little longer if I feel it appropriate to get further reductions. So that's ever-changing, especially now in a very soft market. As far as the anticipated 2008 renewal, on the excess liability and what I call excess liability, you have a $500,000 retention. And what the intent of that liability policy is really to cover three areas. First area is bodily injury and property damage. Under your policy and contract, that further goes on to cover automobile liability and property damage. So you could have an occurrence at one of your covered locations, or you could have an incident with the police or fire causing bodily injury, property damage, or you can have a vehicle. And you notice each one of those situations, I said bodily injury or property damage. That typically is an important trigger under a general liability policy. What's unique about municipality policies, you have the second variable, and that is E and O or professional liability. And professional liability thus covers the cities for errors or acts that is intended toward the city that creates a financial loss. And then the third item is what is called employee benefit liability insurance. Employee benefit liability insurance is there to protect the city for its liabilities that may occur in the management of their employee benefit packages to their employees. Simple example is, I don't properly, I'm the Human Resource Director, I don't properly explain the benefits to an employee, that employee has a financial loss because of it, we turn to our insurance. Granted, you have a $500,000 SIR, so that coverage would have to be, or claim would have to be significant, but you are not paying anything for this coverage, basically. It's included. And we were expecting best-case scenario, or reality, I expected a 15% reduction, taking into consideration the first layer and then also the second layer, which you had a total of $26 million in coverage last year. In reality, based on the numbers that I'm going to go over with you, it's greater than a 20% reduction. The next level is excess workers' compensation insurance. You have a $1 million SIR in this area, and we're expecting through our final numbers that the rate decrease is going to be about 15%, 16%. Sure numbers that you look on the form that you say, well, the premiums are similar, but that's because the exposure basis has increased. The next item is property insurance. We basically have three vehicles in which we cover our property. Vehicle number one is, I call, our special form property policy that covers the things like fire, lightning, and it's expanded to cover everything unless it's specifically excluded. And that policy covers all the covered properties under the schedule of insurance that we work with, that the city has a copy of, with the exception of the peers. That will be the third vehicle that we're talking about. Now, under that first vehicle, the special risk form, we had approximately a 10% savings under the coverage premium, and even though we're in a soft market, we've been so successful in the last years to not let the market get in the way and keep that premium down. So we feel very comfortable with that premium. Where we had huge savings this year is that second vehicle that covers two of the major exclusions under the special risk policy, and that is earthquake and flood. Again, it's not intended to cover the peers. Now, with the market being where it has been, we went and said, how can we save money? We looked at various carriers, but also if you look in under the form up here, and I believe you have a copy, is there a way we can -- thank you. If you notice, the Philadelphia is the special risk The Philadelphia is the special risk policy. The next items, 1, 2, 3, and 4, up to Empire, is the DIC. Now, what the DIC policy is intended to do is cover the earthquake and flood. Now, what we've done was, we eliminated Mount Holly, which is the second item. What we had before was $2.5 million with Pacific, and Mount Holly had $2 million, $2.5 excess of $2.5. We got Pacific to cover the full $5 million this year, and so Mount Holly no longer exists. And then, as you can see, where the premium differential changed. In a nutshell, what the property has done to us on the DIC is we had a 40% decrease in rate. We had a 30% increase in total insured values, and we had a 25% reduction in premium. Now, if I was a council member, I would say, stop right there. Your math doesn't make sense. The reason for that, why we had a 40% decrease in the rate, 30% increase in TIV, is because your loss limit is not necessarily the full total insured value. We have, under the coverage, we have $20 million excess of 15, or a total of $35 million in coverage, and you have total insured values in excess of $140 million. So that's why we were so successful in getting the rate down, but not affecting your premium as much by increasing the total insured values. Any questions on that, how we get to that? The pollution is something that we renegotiate every three years. It's on a three-year policy, and we were successful in a reduction of 23%. Out of all the other carriers that we went to, nobody came close to this premium, and nobody came close to the coverages. This has been with the same carrier since inception that we had the pollution liability policy, and it's XL, an A-rated carrier. Now, some additional coverages, which I state are all other coverages, are basically the watercraft fiduciary liability, and crime is at 4% to a 5% decrease in rate. Watercraft, I think, is obvious. It's going to cover the liability associated with the watercraft, and it covers the hull, too, of that watercraft. Fiduciary liability is, by design, covering the city for the management of the employee benefits. Earlier, I talked about employee benefit liability. That's for making the mistakes. This is for handling the dollars. And the third is crime. Crime is if you have employee embezzlement, theft, et cetera, we have coverage for that. Overall, what we want to show is that we had significant reductions in premium. One of the concerns is, what level should the city purchase in its excess liability? Is 25 enough? When we approached the limits before, it always was, the premium was so excessive. Well, as you can see, we had a major reduction this year, and in addition, we got Westchester, which is an A-11 carrier, A-plus-11 carrier, to offer $25 million excess of $25 million, follow form, so it just sits on top of everybody else, for $105,000 with taxes and fees, $113,000. So in summary, on the liability, if you purchased all three up to $50 million, you would be saving over $60,000 from what you paid last year for $26 million. Are there any questions at this point?
Any questions?
Just to be clear, we picked up another layer of excess coverage then?
Yes.
25 excess 25.
Yes. That's what's being offered on the very bottom.
And having done that, we're still saving about $300,000 in total premium?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's after taking into consideration the exposure base increase for the workers' comp payroll, exposure base increase in population as far as the GL excess liability carriers concerned, and also the increase in total insured values that the property carriers take into consideration. Now, could one purchase a 5% deductible on the DIC? Yes. Could one look at increasing or decreasing maybe the deductible on fiduciary, but for a long-term prognosis of the city's insurance policy by reducing that? Today, we're going to probably be talking about increasing that three years from now, and in my mind, we should choose a stance on both the limits and SIRs for a long-term approach, rather than just gambling year after year.
Councilman Curry?
Yeah, we live in interesting financial times. Apparently, the city of Vallejo declared bankruptcy today. Insurance companies are fundamentally investment vehicles, and are we doing the appropriate credit analysis, rating requirements, or due diligence to ensure that all of these providers, based on their own investments of premium dollars, are financially sound to make good in today's environment?
You know, that's an excellent question, and I wish more of my insurers asked it. Because of Sarbanes-Oxley, a lot of the public companies are asking it more and more. And what I tell boards day in and day out is, we have a wonderful organization in AM Best, and AM Best, over the years, have really learned the hard way in making sure that they monitor this. So we use the AM Best on a monthly basis to make sure and monitor there is no significant change. Once there is, then we ask for interim financials. And another way to really monitor that is, one of the variables that AM Best has in their rating is the company's stable or unstable. And stable, moving forward, we have a really good feel. If it's unstable, we need to do something. Real-life example, one of my insurers, a significant public corporation, had a coverage with a carrier that was A-plus 10, I believe, very strong carrier, stable, et cetera. Unfortunately, during the hurricanes and floods in the South, one of the carriers they had for liability had a very large market share, caused the company to go have significant, significant heartburn, and eventually went under. The point is, we caught it in their financials, since they went unstable, looked at it, pulled the market midterm, got in line, find another carrier to replace coverage, had no financial loss to my insured, and everybody else who was with that carrier had to now wait in line because they did not move midterm. So do we catch it 100% of the time? No, but fortunately, under my watch, with my accounts, we stay on, you know, pretty tight on that, top of that.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mark, how would you characterize our claim loss? I mean, are we very high in terms of insurance payouts?
You know, I'm going to answer that over a long-term period, because again, how you really look at it is not in any given year. And I would say, based on the information that I've reviewed over the years, I would say you're not high from the standpoint, what is high? If it was high, your insurance premiums would be a lot different. If it was high in the eyes of the underwriters, your SIRs would be much higher. If it was high in the certain coverages, like employment practices, et cetera, you would probably have more exclusions than other cities. So because of those variables, I would say no. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public want to comment on the insurance item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to our last study session item, which is the traffic signal communication master plan.
Mayor, members of council, we're very pleased to be here tonight to give you kind of a quick overview of our traffic signal master plan. This has been a long time coming. We're really excited about it. This is really kind of also an opportunity to kind of introduce to you our new enhanced team. We're going to be going full blast on this project to get this implementation of the traffic signal modernization moving along rather quickly, and we've got some ideas on how we might accelerate that. Just to give you a little kind of background on the timeline, as you may recall, this council priority has been in place since 2002, 2003. And at that time, I think we kind of took the approach of trying to maximize our system as best we could. And to that end, we had hired I-Terris, then was Myrd Mohabat Associates, to look at our traffic signal system and maximize that. They proceeded to go ahead and do that, and during the years of 2003, 2004, we had the opportunity to really enhance our signals timing and bring it up to speed. But during that process, I think we realized that we really needed to move forward and come into the next stage of technology. And in 2004, we had a study session to talk about traffic signal timing and technology, and I think that kind of kicked off our process to move forward. During, after that study session, we moved forward with really kind of researching what kind of systems were out there and what would be appropriate for the city of Newport Beach. Obviously, lots of cities have spent a fortune on various traffic signal systems, and we obviously want to take advantage of their knowledge, but we also want to make sure we get an efficient system that is appropriate to our city that will meet our needs. So that process took some time, and then back in 2006, we came back to council in the study session to kind of give you an overview of what our plans were and what direction we were going to go in. Further, we also had peer review. We had an additional consultant come in from Albert Grover and Associates to look at that idea and that program and give us some additional direction, more or less confirmed we're going in the right direction in updating our system. And then more recently, last year, we hired I-Terris to do our master plan and also do our Phase 1 design to get the whole project kicked off. That master plan was completed last December, and it was brought to the General Plan Implementation Committee most recently, and so we're also here with you this afternoon to kind of bring you up to speed where we're at and where we want to go. With me tonight is Dave Webb, our Deputy Fellow Works Director, and Tony Bryant, our City Traffic Engineer. And as well, we have a representative from I-Terris here to answer any technical questions. So we'll go through this kind of quick presentation.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. It's really a pleasure to be here tonight and actually be involved in this program. I was looking at it, and rather new on the team, but it's a real exciting program. I see a lot of great opportunities here. So if we could, go to the next slide there, Tony, here. I'll give you an overview of the program and then some little more detail to follow. Basically, this is the signal modernization program, signal communication program. We have 112 maintained and operated signals that we own in the city. This signal equipment basically dates back, a lot of it came in in 1980. It's starting to have some wear on it, it's starting to get a little outdated. And this program basically involves the replacement of that material. And throughout all the signals in the city, we'll be putting new controllers in there, modern, updated controllers. We'll also be putting in a new master controller system. That would be the computer system that is located at City Hall that runs all those and coordinates them. And then, we have a software system over the city that overlays that, and that's the Conalite software icons. Next slide, please. The additional modifications we're looking at putting in is closed-circuit television along various routes and various intersections. We're going to be doing some fiber-optic cable communication lines to better enhance conductivity in communications. And we'll do some modest upgrades to our traffic management center that needs some revival in that area. And then, we'll also be looking at all our traffic program timings. The timings are plans that run these signals, and we'll be looking at those. About every five years, you're going to modernize those plans. So, we'll be doing that as part of this. And what's really exciting me is there's a lot of benefits that come with this program when I started going through it and getting myself familiar with it. Particularly, the reliability of the signal system. We have quite an age signal system here. You're 25 going and 30 years old on your equipment. And I always look at that as we start having failures, and there's a certain degree of degradation that goes with that. Also, you've noticed your maintenance costs start going up because the equipment's harder to come by. It's a little, take a little longer to get into, and just the design life of it's starting to fail. So, the reliability should go up, we'll have less intersections, failures, less downtime on intersection, less call-out. Also relates to our, we have contract maintenance, I believe, in the town, and that cost will actually go down. We're starting to show increases on that right now because of the age of the equipment. The new technology allows different program timing options that we can't do now with the older systems, which is a really benefit. We'll also be looking at additional coordination. Some of our streets, like MacArthur Boulevard, are not coordinated. We inherited that from the state, and this will coordinate that street and allow it to function a little better. The new equipment and controllers will give us the ability to, on specific events, basically, to do different timing options. Some of those events might be a summer day coming off of the peninsula or the boat parade, which I enjoy, or maybe something coming out of the dunes. When we have a certain event, we can actually set programs and maybe help move that traffic. And I think there's some really good efficiencies we might see in that area. The overall efficiency, some questions that we wanted to answer for you. We've had some thoughts in that, we've talked to various folks. And we're looking at maybe a 3% to 5% overall efficiency. Again, there's just the efficiency from being able to do more stuff in that, and that's why I'm thinking citywide. You'll see specific increases in certain areas, it might be higher, and other areas it might be lower. But we're thinking we're going to get an overall efficiency of 3% to 5%. And it's also going to eliminate some conductivity problems. And some of these are built-in, some of these are inherited. And we gave some examples here. Jamboree Road, where Back Bay Drive comes in, that was a city system meeting a state system, and the conductivity's not in place there. Some other areas might be Avocado, MacArthur area, San Miguel. And what are we looking at here? We're looking at basically, here's a couple of shots if you haven't seen this. On the pole on your left, there is a camera on top, which is actually the camera controlling the signal for the loop inductions that we don't have. We have video on this. But there's a camera down below, if you notice that. That's the camera we're talking about, and that would be something that would basically, excuse me, this one here, basically be able to monitor the intersections. Maybe if we see events happening or something, we can monitor the, from the central control office and maybe do modification timing on that and maybe improve our efficiency more if we see problems or accidents. Plan implementation on this, and the study that you got a copy of, and I think we forwarded you the executive summary, and we have a full detail if you'd like that, basically laid out eight phases of this. And there are several things in those phases. The intersections are grouped basically by geographical location and also similarities. We had to kind of break it up in some areas that made sense. And then, the phases were based at, basically prioritized by volumes and also by accident histories, how they laid that out. The first phase is the critical phase, it's the initial phase, and that's where we actually have to put our backbone system and our master controllers, our software. And then, the MacArthur Boulevard and PCH through Corona del Mar is on that phase. We're looking, this is the fine-tuning phase. As any new rollout, any new software, anything rolls out, we're going to have some areas we have to fine-tune, maybe make some adjustments to and things like that. So, as we get through this phase, that'll help us in the prior phases to come. Phase 2 and 3 actually are in the design works right now. We want to kick that off, and we're actually, there's a resolution tonight for your approval and review for some authorization to go for OCTA grant funding on those two. We're looking to get some additional money on those and get those going. And then, Phase 4 through 8 isn't laid out at this point. We just got them named and identified, but we really haven't looked at the schedule. We've really got a lot of flexibility there. We can combine those, we can do them over time, depending on grant opportunities, staffing, things like that. So, we're open to any possibilities that might move that forward. The next slide here is basically, you see these phases. And I'll point you out here, this is Phase 1 here, going along PCH and the MacArthur. And then, we have Phase 2 through Jamboree here and Bison over here. We have Phase 3 here in the airport area here. And I believe Phase 4 is down here on Irvine Boulevard. And I don't know the other phases offhand, but they are listed there, so we can look at those as we go along. Current schedule, basically what we're looking at, Steve did a great job in going through the history of how we got here, but we're looking at how we move forward. The communication master plan you're seeing tonight, obviously, is the start of that. We're bringing the document to you, want to have you look at that, comment, receive and file that. And we've been doing a lot of parallel pathing, too. We also have another contract coming tonight, and that's the Econoline contract. That's to buy the equipment that basically is the backbone. That's the major controllers and software, and that's on your agenda tonight for your review also. We're looking at Phase 2 and 3, we've been pushing forward on design on that. We think we'll have design rolling March, April. And then, Phase 1, the construction contracts, basically, the design's done, we need to get that out to bid. And we think we can get that awarded by May and then get moving on that. We're looking at completion of Phase 1, having that basically in the ground and running, hopefully by December of '08. And then, Phase 2 falling right behind that, we think we can start the construction of that around fall of '08 and move through that one.
And we're also going to try to advance Phase 3, that's correct, right?
Right, in fact, the OCTA grants are made that way. We did two years based on the call, but if we can get the design going and it moves smoothly, we have the ability to move that grant forward and bring it into this current year coming up. So, we'll keep an eye on that if the opportunity arises. Phase 1, as I mentioned, it has basically 22 intersections in it, all new controllers by Econoline. It is on Coast Highway from Corona del Mar, it also encompasses MacArthur Boulevard. There are some other ideas. When you look at the cost in here from the study, has, I note the dollars in there was like 5,007, 537 was the number. It's a little confusing because our Phase 1 is a little different. We add some things in there. We've been requested to put a pedestrian signal in the Coast Highway and Iris. That's in there. We've included some additional maintenance work we're going to do in those areas. The plans are, I believe, in there, and a couple of other items. So, the phase number, I think, is 1.4 million for that phase. There's some additional work we're doing in that first phase to get it going. And again, the exhibit here shows you Phase 1. We'll follow that with Phase 2. That's along Jamboree, there are 14 intersections in there. All of the intersections will receive new controllers. And then, that design again is scheduled for spring of '08. Construction to think about fall of '08. And that was Jamboree and Bison. And then, Phase 3 that we've actually started scoping out, too, also has 20 intersections in it, and that's in the airport area, up on Campus Drive in Bristol. And that's going to basically start design in '08, and we're hoping to get that construction going in '09, '10. Again, we'll watch that OCTA grant and see how that matures. And we have an exhibit here in your packet for you. And then, the other one we wanted to show you is the total overall cost, we think, for all the phases. We've got the summation, as I note on this last slide. Phase 1 has a different dollar figure. Actually, Phase 1, 2, and 3 have different dollar figures than the Iteris report. And that's because we have additional information, additional items we're putting in there, like the Iris signal and some additional work we need in those area phases. We thought we'd combine it in for economy and scale and get that in there. And then, the rest of the phases, we think, will pretty much flow along these lines. The total cost is about $6 million to implement this whole project. So, with that, I believe we'd like to turn that over to you and have, answer any questions or assist you with that.
Councilman Rosansky?
Yeah, just a couple of comments about the phases here. You know, like, for instance, I'm looking at this phasing map, and I was talking about, for instance, Phase 7, which is Councilman Hens' district, and I don't talk about your district out of turn, but his district is 7, but I see Phase 6 is like Newport Coast and Newport Coast Drive. I mean, how bad can the signals be on Newport Coast Drive? And what kind of traffic flows do we have there when the peninsula sees, I mean, is probably one of the worst areas and most need of a system where you have flexibility in changing timings during different times of the year, different events. And then, I also, you know, I'm looking at the map here, and of course, I understand why, but, you know, it's just even more glaring looking at this. There's nothing for the stretch of Coast Highway from Jamboree to the river, which is probably also one of the worst stretches in town, as far as, maybe next to Corona del Mar, for traffic issues. And, you know, Superior and Coast Highway, the two intersections at Riverside and Tustin and Mariners Mile, Dover Drive, when it hits Coast Highway, these are all some of the worst intersections in town. And we're fixing intersections that really don't even need to be fixed, which I understand we probably want to have one system at the end of the day that covers the entire city. But those are some of the things I think we need to be thinking about. And, you know, it's really, as I say, I'm looking at it here on the map. It's really just bringing it into full focus.
If I could go ahead and just jump right in and answer your questions. Your first comment regarding Balboa Peninsula, I think that's, you know, when we gave instructions to Iteris to initially look at this program, we told them, you know, look at the traffic volumes. Now, obviously, just because it's in that order, doesn't mean we have the ability to switch the priorities around. I would agree with you. Balboa is an area that we definitely have some issues, and we do want to advance that. I think we've kind of said, the airport area and Jamboree and the MacArthur corridor and possibly the Irvine corridor are kind of the key highest volume. And I think after that, you know, it's kind of, we can do whatever priority the council desires, and we'll take direction on that from you, what we would do next after that phase. Or maybe we can, you know, package it all together and hopefully be successful in the grant process and do most of those phases as one last phase, if possible. I mean, I think what we're saying is that we have the flexibility here. Although there are eight phases listed, our goal and our intention is to deliver this project as quickly as possible through the most efficient means possible and hopefully utilizing grant funding as well. So, we do have that ability, and we're looking for direction if that's the case. Along with your comment regarding Coast Highway, we did not include the section that is currently owned and controlled by Caltrans. We don't own those signals. We don't have the ability to upgrade or change any of those signals. I will say, though, that the system that we are installing will interface very well with those signals. And at some point, if we do decide to take control of Coast Highway from Dover, from Jamboree to the San Ana River, we'll certainly want to upgrade that segment and bring that into our system. So, that would be something we'll hopefully negotiate as a part of a deal to take over Coast Highway, to be able to maybe get some funding to go ahead and do that.
So, are you saying that Caltrans would not allow us to upgrade those signals? That they require their signals?
Yeah, they would not allow us to do anything to their signals. We don't really have any control over their signals. They control the timing. They do work with us, but we do not have the authority to go in and make changes.
So, if we wanted to put in a brand-new system for free for Caltrans, they would tell us no?
Well, we could give it to them, but they wouldn't let us control it.
But have we asked them?
Yes, we have. We have, we've had discussions. In fact, Dave and I are scheduled to meet with Caltrans in the next month to talk about potential relinquishment questions and ideas, just to kind of get it out on the table to see what could be worked. But they're generally not interested in, I mean, they would gladly turn the whole roadway over to us. And that's certainly a decision that council can make at some point in time. But I think, I think if they want, if we want control of those signals, we're going to have to take the highway.
They do work with, I was going to say, from my former past job on Beach Boulevard, we did the Smart Street there, and I worked closely with them. We set all the timing and got all the equipment in there, but they still operate it. They require that they operate it, but they will listen to the city and work with you on that.
Following on to Councilman Rosansky.
Yeah, go ahead, no, thanks.
I guess the fundamental issue that I have is with the criteria that were used for prioritization here. I mean, it wouldn't just be traffic volume in my mind, it would be congestion, not volume. And those are two different things. And in some cases, they coincide with the phasing that you've got here, I recognize. But beyond that, there's an issue of emergency accommodation, if you will. And so, for those reasons, and I realize I'm bending the nail on the other side of the board here, I've got to say that we, you know, it's imperative that the peninsula be moved up here. I'm a little disappointed that it's no better than 4th. But if it's got to be 4th, then let's make it 4th because, you know, we just got finished with a citizen survey that said 93% of our citizens, people that, the families that live in Newport Beach, visit the beach. I would think this is a citywide issue to have improved access to the beach and to improve the congestion associated with that four months out of the year and at other times, as you've mentioned, Dave. And then, secondly, and this is even more important to me, and that's this issue of emergency evacuation. And that issue also runs to Coast Highway because we can do a great job of synchronizing the signals on the peninsula. And if we don't have signals synchronized immediately off the peninsula, it ain't going to do anybody any good. We just talked about a siren system. That siren system will be of little value realistically unless we can couple it with an effective means to get people off the peninsula and dispersed into safe areas. And so, for a couple of reasons, the peninsula and Coast Highway really need to be addressed. And I would encourage you to go back again to Caltrans and see if there isn't some solution here that if we can't, if they won't let us do their section of the road, can't they at least let us have control over the, the, the control of the lights? We don't need to own the lights. We just need to be able to have a system that gives us the ability to control them. And what in the heck do they care about that, actually, at the end of the day? The control over the synchronization of those lights?
Well, I would think the care that they have about that is liability. You know, if there are accidents there, who is going to get sued? And it would be Caltrans. Caltrans could not remove themselves from the liability even if they tried to give us the responsibility or authority to establish signal timing and anything else with it.
Then, let's make them a named insured under our insurance policies. Let's see if there's some coordination of policy coverage that helps with that. I, you know, I don't mean to be argumentative, Homer. I'm just saying that I would really like to have the feeling that we have exhausted every possible opportunity here to get control over the synchronization of those signals on state. I realize it's hard, but we've really got to exhaust every opportunity here.
Councilman Webb?
I think that, as far as Councilmember Hens is concerned, I think that if you want to do everything possible, we need to relinquish it to the city. Caltrans is a much larger organization than us, and they have a lot of cities. They don't particularly care very much about conventional highways and the way they operate. And cities have yelled and screamed over the years. And the only way the cities, in my past experience, have gotten around that is by taking over the signals. I know that historically, you go around the various different communities that are adjacent to freeways. And Caltrans demands that they have the signals at the end of off-ramps so that the cities can't program them into their systems and cause traffic to back up onto the freeways. They have not been willing to relinquish that just to synchronize signals on the system. So, I think if we're really serious about Coast Highway, we need to bite the bullet and say, we're going to take on the responsibility of operating and maintaining that in the future. But that wasn't really what I was going to comment about. Just installing these new improvements, like Phase 1 on MacArthur Boulevard along with our operation system, does, the day you turn that switch on, do we get an improvement in efficiency? An improvement in the system? Or do you, do we need to, do we have something that causes our staff to be trained to perhaps be able to operate the system and take advantage of all the new stuff we have?
Well, as we go through the implementation and the installation of the equipment, we will be receiving training, staff will. So, by the time we get to the completion of the project, then staff will be trained to use the software and to be able to implement new signal timing that would be improved and provide some improved coordination along Coast Highway than there is there today. So, I would say that after the end of the first phase, we would see that improvement, and staff would be trained with that software.
Do we have adequate staff to have somebody monitoring that 24 hours a day or 12 hours a day or whatever the timeframe is that's going to be necessary to make these tweaks that everybody is expecting in order to make the traffic flow much more efficiently?
We don't have staff currently that is available to monitor 24 hours a day. And we can certainly come in and monitor the traffic for the workday and even into special periods beyond that. But we don't have, you know, we can't be monitoring 24/7 in the past. And what we do is that if a particular incident does come up, then we can contact the staff, and they can go out, you know, if it's a weekend, Saturday, Sunday, something like that. But 24/7, we currently aren't staffed that way.
Well, to partially answer Mr. Hens' question...
Well, to partially answer Mr. Henn's question of congestion on the peninsula, the most congested days are usually Saturday and Sunday, and so that are we going to, once we get the ability to monitor these things, are you going to be suggesting that we provide some additional staff working on those weekend days to make sure that we can utilize our system?
I think ultimately, we're going to have to address that question. And once the system is converted and we have an operations center and a new city hall, we're definitely going to need more traffic technician-type people that are going to be working this system. Right now, initially, I think our current staff can handle it during regular working hours and do overtime on special events and those kinds of things. But as the system goes into play, we are going to have to really look at that closely. And obviously, we just don't want to monitor 24 hours a day unless we find there's a real benefit to that. Obviously, we want to have the most cost-effective management of this system. We don't want to just create this monster of expenditure that's not necessary. We want to make sure we have the most cost-effective system that really is going to deliver benefits to the citizens.
Twenty-four-hour day was not really, it wasn't realistic, but however, one of the things that may need to be necessary in order to adequately handle our most congested timeframes is that we may need to have a seven-to-nine and a five-to-seven shifts as far as the monitoring is concerned, if we truly are going to try to make adjustments based on traffic congestion that occurs maybe not on a regular basis but infrequently.
Precisely. I mean, it seems to me that, you know, flexible timing of staff, which may not have to involve additional staff necessarily, at least, is a responsible solution.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a follow-up question? Steve, are we going to be able to, like, on the peninsula, if we, if the weather forecast looks good, dial into the system Saturdays and Sundays, different signal synchronization timing in advance, and that would be called up by the system?
Yeah, typically, that's what we do with these type of systems, you kind of run out scenarios of various, you know, like a beach day, a good beach day. But also, you want to have the ability for adjustability. I mean, we've all been at the beach where the fog rolls in suddenly at 2:00 and everybody leaves, and it's just a nightmare. So, I think that's when you need to have somebody watching it, monitoring it, and making those adjustments. And we would probably have some essentially pre-designed programs when that happens. We would design that in advance and say, "If this situation happens, we go into this mode." And I think that's the beauty of this system, is to have that kind of flexibility to make adjustments in real time to really make a difference in those situations.
And we currently, even today, we have on, coming off of the peninsula on Newport Boulevard at Finley, we have a fairly simple operation where on the weekends, if the police department's here, they see some very long backups on the peninsula of people coming out of the beach, they can go to that particular cabinet at Finley, open it up and flip a switch and get a long green cycle at Finley to start to move the traffic off the peninsula. It's a very simple system, but we have that in place today.
Councilman Henn, or Curry, excuse me.
Steve or Dave, what's the estimated time between Phase One and Phase Eight? Is there a schedule at all on this, or is it sort of just as revenues are available?
We really haven't laid out the schedule pass four. It's based on revenue, it's based on staff availability. There's also grant opportunities. Measure M Phase Two is coming around, it's got a lot more signal money in it, so we're looking at that.
Right.
If there's opportunities, it'd be great to capitalize on that. And there's usually, we can grab a two or three phases at a time, it's usually about $250,000 per phase availability. But on the other hand, it's open. If you, if there's an opportunity that comes around and we want to do four through eight as one big chunk, we could do that.
So, it's fair to say you can build it as fast as we can fund it?
Pretty much, yes.
More or less.
See my sweater?
Once we do Phase One and work the bugs out of it.
Yes, we can react pretty quick to that.
And of the $6 million, how much of that is estimated to come out of Measure M funds?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have 500 on Phase One. Phase Two and Three, we're applying for 250 each phase. I couldn't tell you the future, but it looks good based on what we've done on One, Two, and Three. We, there's also money through our GMA, and we've been able to grab a little of that for design in Phase Two and Three, we've got 250, I think it was in that, right?
So, we might get 50%?
Yeah, 50% would probably be a good target.
And is this through the competitive program or the formula, turnback?
You could go both.
We typically use, you know, we go after the competitive monies, and then we'll leverage, you know, we'll leverage our regular turnback.
And we use gas tax for the balance?
And we also use our fair share fees as well, because this is, you know, traffic congestion reduction.
Right. Well, I would only offer, number one, this demonstrates the importance of the renewal of Measure M because it puts the money for these kinds of projects available to us to compete for. We're ahead of the curve in competing for them and being able to implement this. Number two, it shows that, as Councilman Henn had mentioned, that traffic is our, one of the leading concerns of our community, and we are already well-aware and well, and advanced in addressing that through the synchronization program, and I think the department's to be commended for that. And to my colleagues' concerns about schedule, I think schedule is what we want it to be. I think we have the ability, working with OCTA and many of the self-help counties, San Diego, for example, is advancing $600 million next month of their measure money that goes into effect on April 1st from the renewal. Orange County's goes into its Phase Two, I guess, in 2011, but they can advance that money forward and we can work with them and leverage our own gas tax resources to really build this in what is the optimal efficiency deployment for the community so that all of the areas of the city are benefiting from this kind of improvement in a very quick way, I believe.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Yeah, I'd like to go back on the phase project implementation, you don't have to skip back there, but on here it says, "We're going to fine-tune the project," and then I hear Steve say, "We're going to get the bugs out."
Probably a poor choice of words, but...
Oh, okay, because I do think if we are anticipating some startup problems, I would very much like to have someone at our Orange, coming down to our Residents Association annual meeting to explain some of the things that might happen and do a little outreach there. I'll send you the date, it's in April.
We're not anticipating problems. I guess with any new system, you have to fine-tune it and make sure you optimize it. And I think that's what we're going to do, and we're very confident that our consultant, ITERs, will give us good guidance on how to do that and good training so that we learn how to do that on our own.
Your floor, Tim Dagel.
Yes, as Ben mentioned, when we did our community survey to give some context of where our constituents that we represent are with traffic, it was identified as, you know, number one thing that they want us to improve traffic flow. And certainly, it's been a part of every election and every campaign since 1992, and, you know, we live with the Green Light, which is a very strong grassroots movement to protect, to control growth through traffic. So, something we think about daily, and certainly as council members, when we make representations to the media and to the community, we want to be sure, you know, that we are improving traffic flow. And I've heard numbers in the last week as low as zero to as high as 5%, so I have some concern about what is it that we're actually, you know, going to be improving here. And to that end, and, you know, to the idea that we just really want to get this right, I have spoken with the city manager and the mayor and kind of cleared it with them, that it'd probably be a good idea if we had one more set of professional eyes on it, you know, just so that we're going into it. You know, we've sort of looked at, looked at everything that we could, and so if that could be okay. And then I had, I guess, a couple of things to throw out there. I've talked to OCTA in the last couple of days and also some developers that seem to have a pretty acute understanding of traffic. And some of the things that have come back is the idea of a performance clause where, you know, the representation's made that we're going to, if you purchase our hardware, then we're going to improve it this much, you know, can that be locked in? And then also, in terms of building these systems, I've been told that there's been signal surveillance projects that included incentives as well as penalties. So, when we're putting this online, that it's, you know, that we've locked it in that way. And then also, I've seen some pretty high numbers, and probably their geography is a lot better than ours. They had Euclid where they had a stretch of road underwent signal synchronization that went, improved 23%, so that's a pretty good number. And then another sort of thought is, I agree with Councilman Webb, and I think Steve said it as well, it seems like a lot of the improvements are going to be in our operations, you know, that we actually have personnel that can see this, you know, that so that there's active surveillance and then, you know, whatever it is, changeable message boards, radios, SIG alerts. So, that would, I just kind of want to get your feedback on how you see going forward where we're going to drive improvement in the system or in traffic flow.
Well, I think that, you know, all the things that you mentioned are definitely things that we need to consider. In our construction projects, we can certainly have some performance criteria built into those contracts. With the software and the vendors for the machines, it's a little harder because you, they all have to work together, so it's hard to get one person that's going to be responsible. I'll say, "Well, I'll be responsible for my software, but I'm not going to commit for this guy's controller, and I'm not going to commit for that guy how he, how he might have installed it." So, there are some complications there, and I think we understand what you're saying, and we'll certainly look at that and see if there are some creative ways where we can build in some performance criteria into this process. I think that's a good idea. You also mentioned that it might be good to have another look. We're okay with that, we could, we could get someone on board. I did talk to a couple of traffic engineering consultants, said they'd be happy to do that. We feel very strongly that the report that we've gotten from ITERs is a good one, we're very confident that whatever that consultant finds will probably be very positive and...
How much would that be?
I'm not really sure at this time what that would be, but I could give...
For the peer review?
Like a peer review type thing, yeah. And we'd want to probably expedite it and do it rather quickly because we really don't want to hold up this process any more than we have to. But we'd be okay with that.
Okay, thanks.
Just to follow on to that one second, if you don't mind. The, let me suggest this. This overall 3% to 5% improvement, I think you want to stay away from numbers like that. I think what you want to do is look at the key intersections or the key stretches of road, establish the baseline, and then be able to measure key area by key area what the improvement is. And that means you got to measure. You got to decide how you're going to measure, and then you have to do the measurements so that you can then, at the end of the day, report what the improvement is, key intersection by key intersection. I really don't care about the overall number. I couldn't care less about that. And so that the residents that are near these intersections or that drive these intersections regularly, the stretches of road, can see the results. Not just see them, they're going to feel them, I hope, but where they can't quite feel them so well, they can see the results and we can report on it. And I'm hoping we can shoot for numbers way more than 3% to 5% when you look at it on that basis.
You raise a very good point. I think the 3% to 5% is really kind of the number we came up with in discussing with traffic engineers in other cities and consultants, saying that this is typically what you can expect upgrading to a new system, 5% being an optimum. But I think you're correct. At certain locations, it'll be extremely much higher because in areas where we don't have any coordination now or minimal coordination, or we have connectivity issues, like David mentioned, between the old Caltrans system on Coast Highway and Back Bay and Jamboree Road signal, those, those connectivity issues will go away, and we may be seeing some really huge increases in efficiency. And again, another good point is keeping track of kind of the before and after data so we can show that how we've improved, and we'll certainly take that and build on that idea. That's an excellent idea.
And I definitely, I'll jump around on this, I definitely agree that what we really should be looking at here is specific locations, like you mentioned, that that's really where we're going to see improvements. And I, I come back to the MacArthur, San Miguel, San Miguel-Avocado couplet. I would definitely expect that we're going to see some real improvements there because we have different equipment at MacArthur and San Miguel than we have at Avocado and San Miguel. So, when we change out that equipment, then we will have the same equipment that'll be able to communicate with each other. What happened on MacArthur is we essentially inherited the old Caltrans equipment. So, these are the types of things that we're going to see is, we will have, when this project is, plays out, the same communication equipment, controller equipment at every intersection in the city, and that'll allow us to have that consistent communication between the signals. Councilmember Dagel brought up Euclid, and that's a demonstration project that OCTA's been working on, but they've been working with, I think it starts at Fullerton and works its way all the way down to Anaheim, or I'm not sure where, but they've been working with probably four or five cities, I'm not sure. And so, each of those cities have their own timing patterns along Euclid, they had their own equipment. In addition, the Caltrans intersections at the freeways, there's a lot of things going along Euclid that when they came in and said, "Let's do a project here," they started off with making timing changes that, once they got the timing synchronized along there, that's where you'll see the big improvements there. We've done timing over the years here so that we have consistent cycle lengths from intersection to intersection. So, it's a much different comparison on when you look at a Euclid versus Newport Beach, but I agree with Councilmember Hen that where you're really going to see the improvements is specific locations.
Councilman Rosansky?
Yeah, just to follow up on something that Steve said and getting back to this argument about Coast Highway and taking it over from Caltrans, I'd certainly like to have a report back after you met with Caltrans to see exactly where we are at that and what the possibilities are. And I would also, I guess, suggest maybe a council-level committee set up to look at that because, you know, it's, it just seems to me that there's going to be a gaping hole here in this traffic plan. And, you know, at the end of the day, after we spend our $6 million, we're still going to have a lot of residents complaining that they can't drive through Mariners Mile, they can't drive down Coast Highway, they can't get off the peninsula, they can't go up Newport Boulevard because we don't control all these intersections. There's other things we'd like to do at Mariners Mile, maybe widen it or change some lanes, redo the arches interchange that we can't do now because Caltrans won't let us do.
Not the arches interchange.
There's one leg of that interchange that still needs to be taken care of, but there's many things that we want to do. We, we're going to have issues with Banning Ranch folks when it comes to access to the highway, that we want to make sure we're in the driver's seat on when the time comes because we don't want to leave Caltrans, you know, our fate to Caltrans as far as accessibility to the highway and how traffic patterns are going to be. So, I think that this issue is now becoming very ripe for us, especially...
You mean that we would take it over?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, with the idea that we would take it over. So, that would be, I know this is not the time to suggest bringing back things for staff report, but certainly I'd like to see that as part of it as well, a council-level committee.
Well, I would add that being an unfortunate, I guess, participant in dealing with Caltrans on the relinquishment in Corona del Mar, that I concur with Councilman Webb that the ultimate solution is taking over the highway, and there's not going to be any money available, we know that now, we're not going to get money like we got in Corona del Mar if we do it. It seems to me what we ought to do is we ought to add to this master plan an additional phase and get in there and cost it out, because at the end of the day, we're going to probably have to pay for it and put it in here wherever the appropriate sequence is to accomplish it. But it does seem like it's a big gap in the system. It seems like we're solving a lot of problems in other areas, and yet we're leaving this big hole here. Any other comments? Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, what the staff understands is that we will send this out for a peer review and do that as quickly as possible, as cheaply as possible, and then you want to remove the item from the agenda tonight then as far as the purchase.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
How long, how does that, if we remove that from the agenda tonight as far as purchase is concerned, how much does that lengthen our process? Let's say the peer view, a good peer review takes a month. Does that mean that that delays this overall process another month? Or if we anticipate that there's going to be significant changes, well, okay, I guess I'm somewhat concerned about how it might change to where we need to remove that from tonight.
Well, obviously, I would prefer to have it go through tonight and get that contract with Econolite because that's a big part of the project itself, and if we took that off the agenda and pushed it back, if you will, we'd have to push back the design contract and bid, or design bid, and we'd essentially be pushing the project back. We'd be getting very close to where we're trying to award a construction... We'd be getting very close to where we're trying to award a construction contract very close to the end of the fiscal year. So we're trying to, we've been doing a number of things concurrently, the contract with Econolite, the completion of the design plans, we've been doing these things concurrently to try and get this project moving. And it was a rather lengthy process of, to get this purchase contract finished with the city attorney's office, working on it with Econolite. So we're confident on the Econolite contract, and I wonder if we can't separate that out from a peer review of the master plan, but that would be the council's decision.
If I might add in, the negotiations on this Econolite contract were very lengthy, very detailed, and there was a lot of give and take. So we worked pretty hard on it, and we feel very comfortable with this contract.
In answer to Councilman Webb's question, I think we'd be talking about a month. You know, peer review would probably take two weeks to get it on the, on an agenda. I think we're looking at a month.
Well, does a peer review, is that going to affect the type of equipment, potentially?
Well, I think we're looking at the master plan, and that is what is being reviewed, and this is a component of the master plan, it's a technological component.
Yeah, I would say that if it was determined that we should use a different type of equipment, we essentially go back to square one in the design process.
Which means a delay of maybe six, eight months.
Six, eight months.
Do we, is there any technology on the horizon that we haven't looked at, that we would anticipate such a change?
Tony, you might answer that. I was just going to say that Econolite's located in Anaheim, they're a first-class equipment supplier and basically a mainline supplier, so I don't know if there's so much of a fear there, but I don't know if you can comment on the equipment and other technologies?
No, the equipment that we're purchasing from Econolite is the state-of-the-art. It's the latest equipment that we, that is available on the market. And Econolite has a good track record as far as providing equipment to other cities. We're very confident with Econolite, with this up-to-date equipment that they have.
Then I guess I would just ask, I was satisfied with what we had, but obviously, there's some people that have some discomfort because of the peer review. So what are we trying to establish and what?
Well, I think that the thinking is, is it's probably one of the most important decisions that we make, and, you know, I think getting another professionalized, set of eyes on and being sure, I think, is, might serve us all well. So if it's a brief delay, because if there's another set of review and it comes back, you know, you want to make these changes, then we won't have the flexibility to do that.
Robin, is there an issue with the contract if we delay for 30 days?
There's not an issue with the contract.
Is there an issue with the price if we delay for 30 days?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Our only concern is, at some point, we have to fulfill our grant commitments with OCTA.
What's the timeframe for that or the timeline for that?
The end of the fiscal year.
End of the fiscal year, we have to award projects.
We have to let a contract by the end of its fiscal year. So certainly, if 30 days is not going to...
No, it's not going to break.
Well, I sort of agree with Councilmember Gardner. I think I'm prepared to move forward tonight, so maybe what we ought to do is leave it on the agenda and then discuss it at that point in time, decide how we want to have disposition.
Okay. Okay, any comments from the public?
Hi, I'm Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. Yeah, ever since I've lived here, people have been talking about traffic. My interest and concern in this is, we had, at the General Plan Implementation Committee, we went over all eight phases of this, and there was a little bit more detail, maybe I remember more detail or asked more questions. Part of the concern that I have is that, does this really improve our traffic? Because it's called the Traffic Signal Communication Master Plan and the Signal Modernization Project. And shame on us that we've let 25 years go by before we've upgraded some of these computers that run our signals. But also, part of it was, Phase One and Phase Two were like where MacArthur is and Avocado and those. But then the other, I mean, like the theater streets weren't being addressed then. So even if you put a couple of cameras up at a few intersections, it doesn't really mean that you're going to improve the overall efficiency. And last night, we, at EQUAP, we got an introduction to the new Hyatt project, and they want to put in 88 timeshares, and that's probably going to be 4,000 keys or 4,000 vacation people coming, okay? So another thing is that this is going to take like five years, 4,000 trips, or whatever it is, Sharon, you can tell us later, okay? I'm tired, so, but you can correct me, please. But anyway, by the time this gets finished, in like maybe five, six years or seven years, there isn't going to be any overall efficiency that we're going to recognize, because if you drive up Jamboree and MacArthur, you can see what Irvine is building and just everything coming in. But see, the bottom line, I think, is that we're going to get a better system that we can be able to tweak at times and control the beach with. But I think we're giving up, I mean, like we're giving out false hope, we're sending false hope out to the public by thinking that this is going to be the Panacei, and you're going to just be able to zoom down Jamboree or down Pacific Coast Highway, and I haven't heard that from anybody. So I think that there needs to be some type of an education that we don't have a level of expectation by the public, that then they're going to get disappointed, and I think we should be as honest as possible. And honestly, the average is going to be 3% to 5%, and if you want to look at intersections and say they're 60%, when a person's sitting in a car, by the time they get to that intersection that has a 60% improvement, it's all gone if they've waited at three or four lights. And another thing is, the 1441 and 1401 Avocado, again, I don't care how many cameras you have there, there's two lanes, and that second lane, when you have to turn in, just get stopped. That's it. There's probably enough space to make a third lane there, so that you could turn in. But I think that someone needs to go to the owner of that property and find out why they don't have a valet system. Because as we know, we're all getting older, and a lot of the people that go there to park are older, older than me and older than most of the people in this room. And they're either being driven by somebody, or they're still driving themselves. And if they're being driven by somebody, then people have to wait while they get into the car, and there's someone that's queued in for that parking space, because they're so valuable in there that they don't leave. And so then there's another person behind them, and another person behind them, and you get to the point where you're waiting out on the street on San Miguel. And so I don't care what kind of a traffic system you put in there, other things that need to be fixed, you know, that's one of the things that would really, really help. And I think it's wonderful that you're spending the money on this project, but I also agree with Councilmember Hen that the peninsula has been like the ugly stepchild to the city, and I think they need attention, and they need attention in this area. I know we spent all that money with the downtown, with the, you know, nice sidewalks that have all the glitter and different colors in the cement, but that doesn't help their ever, I mean, like their everyday, you know, traffic. And to be honest with you, here I go again, not that I like spending money, but again, $6 million over five years for this, that's not that much money. I mean, if we could do it sooner and do a couple of different areas at a time and maybe pay for some of it ourselves, I don't think that's the end of the world if it makes all the residents happy, especially since, you know, but you already knew before you did the study, that that's the number one issue that we have in the city. And as we do more and more projects, that we're building out more and more, for example, there might not be today a need for Newport Coast, but once that whole area gets done up there with 100 more timeshares, 1,000 more timeshares, whatever, that's going to come online and probably need some new traffic signalization. But are these going to synchronize our lights, or are they just going to help to manage them? I mean, are we going to be able to make them all green? I mean, I know, see, John, and this is what people think, so, you know, I'm just, okay. But that's something that needs, you need to tell the public, too, because there are people in the public like me, and they think, wow, this is going to be great, and we're just going to zoom down to the beach. But that's not what's really happening, and some of it is that we're just updating our equipment, and it's really about time. And thank you very much for doing this and spending all the time you do on this. I really appreciate it, and so does everybody else. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned to closed session. Oh, I forgot to ask for public comments and non-agenda items. Seeing none, now we're in closed session.